Thanks, James. So a call to order, anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session and considered two items, existing litigation, the Santa Barbara Channel Keeper versus SWRCB, city of San Buenaventura versus Abbott litigation, no reportable action taken. Second item was anticipated litigation and also no reportable action taken. Thank you.
James, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Thank you.
Roll call? Oh, roll call.
Pledge first is okay, too.
Okay.
Please stand, right hand over your heart, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. Gail, who have the roll call, please?
Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, and approval of the agenda? Move to approve. Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, we're gonna start with the presentations today.
Do you need a second for that?
I'll second it.
And a vote, too.
Oops, sorry.
Which is good, but yeah.
I'm excited. Okay, do we get a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, do we have a vote, Gail?
It can be unanimous.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Does it need to be roll call now?
Unfortunately, yeah, the votes on the Zoom need to be, even for the items, need to be roll call.
And before anybody complains about it, there's 10 board members on APCD and we got to do this. So.
And, and just so you're all aware, every time I speak, I'm unmuting myself, so it'll take me an extra second. I'm using the microphone on my computer tonight is just, has better fidelity. So. So roll call on the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, moving on to the presentations. I'm gonna start with the acknowledgement and I'm really grateful to be able to do this. I really wanted to do this, put this on the agenda today to start the new year off in a positive way and also to connect it to the themes of Martin Luther King Day, which is on Monday. And as we all know, we owe a large debt to Dr. King and the African American Movement for Civil Rights and, you know, uplifting everyone of color. And thank you for that undying work. A land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects Indigenous people as traditional stewards of this land and the enduring relationship that exists between Indigenous peoples and traditional territories. It represents a healing. So in the spirit of healing, I acknowledge the Schumash tribes and those descendants who live amongst us today, the original people of the land on which our city stands. Thank you. And now it's my great honor to introduce Julie Tombite Stensley, our local Schumash elder, who's gonna say a few words about the acknowledgement. So thank you. Gail, do we have Julie out there?
We are waiting for her to log back into the meeting.
Okay.
Not there yet.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Betsy, I didn't hear what Julie's gonna be doing.
She's gonna talk a little bit about what an acknowledgement means and just from talking for a few minutes about that.
While we're waiting for Julie, I wanted to make a suggestion for the future is that we have a sign that has the Schumash word for Ojai, some possibly at City Hall. I know this, we can discuss this in the future. I thought I'd mention it while we have a little lull in our presentation.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind it at the entry to the entry.
I love that idea, the entrance to the city.
Yeah. Why not? Why not let people know who we are?
Yeah, and we don't need permission from Caltrans, you know, down the road. If we want to do something more, that's a process, like with the peace sign and all that. But that's great to hear their support. We'll get that on the agenda if we need to.
That'd be great. I learned recently that Ojai for sure, and I learned this from an ethno linguist, means moon. So you can all care on that.
Moon, value the moon. Yeah.
And Julie was telling me she was trying to get logged in, so we have two options. We also had the HPC awards, so we could start that and then come back to Julie, or we can try to give her another minute. So I was trying to buy some time by speaking slowly, but.
Is HPC ready?
Yeah, should we just move forward and then she can go afterwards?
That would work. We could come back to that. Come back to Julie, so. We, we have, if she pops on right now, I'll pivot back, but we, we were actually, we, we have the HPC award presentation today and we had, obviously during COVID, everything is a little different and a little challenging, but we were very appreciative that Brian Aitkins, the HPC Chair, and the, the award recipients all were willing to have a Zoom call that we recorded that we are going to air. So we have about a 10-minute call, or a 10-minute video that where the HPC Chair lists the accomplishments of each person and then presents the award. So James Hahn, if you hear me, can you cue that up?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Manager with the city of Ojai. With me tonight is Brian Aitkins of the Historic Preservation Commission. He is the Chair of the Commission, as well as four members of the community who have received awards through the Historic Preservation Commission. Tonight, I'm going to turn this over to Chair Aitkins, who is going to say a few words regarding each recipient, as well as some hardware, I believe, that you have to present tonight as well. Chair Aitkins?
Yes, thank you very much, Lucas. We're happy to have three out of four of our individuals with us right at this moment. We, the fourth one is trying to break into Zoom. We all know how that first Zoom meeting goes. First of all, person, we have two awards that are for annual awards and two awards that are lifetime achievement awards. The first person we'd like to recognize as the City of Ojai Annual Historic Preservation Award is Darwin McCready. And I'm gonna read just a brief bio on him. Darwin has been a preservationist since the 1980s when he became a member of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. As a longtime Ojai resident, Darwin led Ojai's Historic Preservation Commission by serving on the commission for eight years and served as Chair for four of those years. During this time, he led the commission in the process of landmarking the Termina District, and he fought to preserve the Wallace Neff Lounge at the Ojai Valley Inn. Darwin's commitment to Ojai while he served on the Historic Preservation Commission, his deep knowledge and considerable education in preservation, has raised the bar for understanding the value of and continuing to protect Ojai as one of California's most valuable architectural significant towns.
Thank you.
We will, as soon as we can do so safely, be presenting this plaque to Darwin. And Darwin, it was a pleasure to work with you, always to sit next to you and to listen to your guidance and share your experience. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Brian.
The next award is for, again, City of Ojai Annual Historic Preservation Award is for Perry Van Houten. Perry's outstanding contributions to the preservation of Ojai's unique historical and cultural heritage include historical research, oral histories, and a balanced and accurate reporting of the news of today, creating the history of tomorrow. Perry has long been involved in Ojai's historical preservation. Back in the days of David Mason, I miss you, David, Mr. Van Houten tirelessly interviewed David for articles and could often be found in the Ojai Valley Museum Library, excuse me, pouring over 100 years of publications in the museum archives. For years, Perry has preserved Ojai's history and cultural, culture through his reporting on Ojai history and its people, places, and events. Perry has been keen on preserving Ojai's natural history and has researched and documented unique Ojai trees, as well as local hiking trails. Perry's tireless commitment to historic, historical research, award-winning journalism, and his continuous service to preserving Ojai's unique heritage qualify him for the 2019, actually 2020 Historic Preservation Award. And just then again, we can do so safely, we'll be presenting this plaque to Perry. So congratulations, Perry.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you to the HPC and to the city and to all our wonderful friends over at the Ojai Valley Museum, who really get so much of the credit for my interest in Ojai history. And you mentioned, of course, Mr. Ojai, David Mason, boy, we do miss him and, and a lot of the credit. I'm sure he'd be smiling down on this meeting right now, you know, from where he's at. But thank you, that's a lovely, lovely honor.
Great, thank you, Perry. So at this time, we're going to switch over. Lucas, it looks like John Williams is muted at the moment. This time, we're gonna switch over to City of Ojai's Lifetime Historic, Lifetime Achievement and Historic Preservation Award. I love these people because they've contributed so much to our community. And so we're happy to have with us Don Cluff and his daughter Kathy. And we all miss having Sheila with us also, very much so. So let me just read a little bit of what was noted on Don and Sheila Cluff. Donna Sheila Cluff moved to Ojai in 1969. They started managing the Oaks Spa, formerly the El Roblar Hotel in 1977. Sheila says about the first time she went to the Oaks, "I vividly remember the first time I went to look at the place. The Oaks was built in 1918 and must have originally been quite impressive with its mission-style architecture, grand rooms and vast surroundings. When I first saw it, however, the bar and dining room had been shut down by the Health Department. The ad on porch looked as if it was about to fall off, and the pool and deck needed total renovation. Much of the original architecture had been destroyed and almost the entire place was swathed in a brown color palette. Still, its potential was obvious, thank goodness. I immediately loved the big stone fireplace in the lobby, and what used to be the ballroom would make a good fitness center. The location was ideal, right in the heart of picturesque town, of the picturesque town surrounded by orange and lemon groves and situated in a gorgeous valley." Sheila and Don restored the facade in keeping with the historic look of Ojai and the archaic. They maintained the property for over 40 years as a vibrant business that respected the character of downtown Ojai while sitting in a bar for how to run a business and sustainably manage tourism in a small town. Even though the Oaks was not landmarked, the Cluffs restored and maintained the historic property in keeping with the mission style, which helped elevate and inspire historic preservation for the entire downtown area. Sheila and Don Cluff set an example for future business owners on how to manage a successful business in the heart of downtown that respects and augments the character of Ojai. And as Darwin knows, he's been a part of it. We're currently looking at proposing a, discussing the downtown historic corridor. And we are, as I'm sure Darwin would fully agree with, we are pleased, honored, the way that the Oaks has been taken care of by the Cluffs over these decades. Darwin, the architect, can appreciate far more than I the historical significance of what you have there now. And so this is pity to receive this lifetime honor. And so we have a lifetime achievement plaque, and we'll get that to you safely. Thank you, both.
Thank you.
We'd also like to note that sitting with Don is his wonderful and lovely daughter, Kathy Cluff, who has been helping out with the Oaks for quite a long time. I probably grew up in there. And so she's now doing a great job. Thank you, Kathy, for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. John Williams.
Yeah, she is sitting, my mother is sitting right next to me, closer to the computer. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, John.
Yes, we can hear you.
John, can you hear us?
Okay, so she's sitting right next to me. Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Okay, so we'll go right into our other recipient of the Lifetime Achievement and Historic Preservation, and that would be Patricia Clark Dorner. Let me read a summary of the information that was provided for, for Pat. Patricia Clark Dorner is a fourth-generation Ojai rancher, writer, historian, and community activist. The Ojai Valley Museum did an exhibit in 2013 tied to historic ranching families of the Ojai Valley. This included the Clark family. Pat's family came from Wisconsin and have been in the Ojai Valley since 1868, 1868, just want to emphasize that. Pat raised four children before graduating summa cum laude from the University of California at Santa Barbara, earning an honors graduate degree from University College Dublin, Ireland, the top award in nonfiction writing at the Santa Barbara Writers Conference, and teaching at UCSB and Cal State Northridge. Pat has provided many historical stories. Local history publications include The Sheriffs of Ventura County and Portrait of a Sheriff. Additionally, multimedia productions, which include the cemeteries of San Buenaventura, a matter of grave concern. Pat has articles for her history, of her history, knowledge, and personal experiences included within the Ojai quarterly publications, the Ojai Valley Museum's Ojai History website articles. Pat was a member of the City of Ojai Historic Preservation Commission for 17 years. And Darwin and I know 17 years. That's a long time, and we appreciate it very much, don't we, Darwin?
Yes, and I remember starting on the commission and Pat was still serving, and she would, in the Commissioner comments, correct all of the grammatical or spelling errors in the minutes, every month. We tried to, we tried to continue with that tradition, Pat.
So, Pat, I'm not sure if you can see it, but I'm holding it up just in case. So this is the Lifetime Achievement Award plaque that we will get down to you as soon as it's safe and we can make arrangements for it. So, Pat, always a pleasure listening to you. I picture you as one, when I think of the go-to people in the Ojai Valley for history, you are definitely at one of those people that people have gone to and that we've still gone to. So, go to, so.
Thanks for indulging that. I think, you know, we, we all prefer to have the in-person award ceremonies, but in light of the circumstances, we appreciate Brian Aitkins, the Chair, and the, each of the recipients working with us on, on finding a way to, to do that virtually. So I saw a hand go up, Councilmember Haney, do you have something?
I'd like to say something after Julie speaks.
Okay. All right. So, so just thank you to each of those award recipients, and we're getting the plaques out to them now, so in a safe way.
Hi, Julie.
Hi, Julie.
Hi, finally, sorry. I was busy today. I should have checked my email earlier.
Now, thank you for being here, and I'll give it, now that we've done the HPC awards, I'll give it back to, to Mayor Stix, who is introducing this item.
Sure. So Julie, I did the acknowledgement, so do you want to say a few words about what that means?
Well, you know, we worked really hard a few, couple years ago, and we put in place, you know, just some language that, you know, acknowledging that, that the Native community is still with us. As an elder, looking at the future of our young ones coming in, I mean, it's really important that people realize that although we're protecting our past and the resources and sacred sites and remains that are underground, as, as humans and people still walking this earth, we are encouraging our youngers to come in and to be part of, you know, their future and the future of this cultural, just wealth of, of information. And, and to just move in that place of being, you know, present here in this community. Ojai still holds for, for so many people, that feeling and that presence of, of the nurturing that this valley has for people. And it comes from the thousands and thousands of years of nurturing nature and, and vice versa, nature nurturing all of us, even in this time, this whole last year, and unfortunately, more into this year, people are going towards nature, to nature, for just a relief, a breath of fresh air. I hope that they will keep and continue to do it in a respectful manner. But to see the landscape and to know the connection that our people have had with this valley and, and our tribal territories that are vast and including the islands, that, that sense of spirit is always going to be here. It's always going to be with us. And as we pray for this future of, of our communities, as the new people that have moved into this valley, that they recognize not only the value now that they have in their purchases here, but the other values that Ojai holds for people. The, the sense of security, you know, the, the sense of just this, when people in Ojai need something, we are there. We're there for them. And we reach out, you know, we, we all know one another. The parents know all the kids and the kids know that, know that. And so, you know, it is a small town, and we want to keep that in, in place and, and share with people that community, that village. You know, as we're coming close to MLK Day in the beautiful Libby Park, I want to always remind people that we are, our central valley, right here in this downtown, there are five to, 5,000 to 9,000-year-old sites that, that, that show, and that we have discovered the occupation of our relatives here. So, you know, I thank you. I thank you for that acknowledgement and that we, that are here today will still, you know, work with the city and, and the outer parts with the county to preserve what is, what is under our feet. And the work that we all put in with Randy and Bill and Craig Beam and Don Teeding, who's I think on with us today, listening. So I thank you. I thank you for that acknowledgement. And then Suzie, was there something else that you were gonna present?
Oh, I already mentioned it in, before, but, but it's, the council seemed to agree that we should have a sign at City Hall with the Schumash word for Ojai.
Yeah, so, so just to, just to add a little bit to that, if I may, people, you know, for, for still today, you know, so, oh, I thought it meant nest. So I'm always, I'm always, you know, kindly, you know, because it's, it was a poem that was written so long ago, and our mountains really suggest that. And I think that that nurtures the safety and the, and the coziness of our valley. But the word for nest is kasak. It doesn't sound anything at all like Ojai or Ahai. So Ahai is the village in the upper valley, and where people are even kind of moving that definition a little bit further and saying valley of the moon. My friend and other Schumash elder here, Brandon MacCaddo, visited you and asked you about that, because we really do want people to feel that sense of originality and not, you know, kind of mess around with the definitions. So Ahai, meaning moon or lunar phase, not valley of the moon. So with that, thank you so much, everybody, for all the work you're doing. It's so good to see you. I, sometimes I miss you, sometimes I don't, after the three years. But I always admire, you know, the work that has been put into, into the work you do. And, and it's up to us as the citizens here of the Ojai Valley to let you know what we need and, and, you know, and talk these things out. So as much as we can, Happy New Year, be safe, be well, and prayers for a, a good, prosperous, and short-term virus for this new year. So thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Julie, welcome.
I like hearing you pronounce Ahai. Is that how you say it?
You put a little, you put a little in there, so Ahai.
Nice.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Waya, waya.
Gratitude, you. Well, I guess we're ready for public communications, all. Yeah.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie. Nice to see you.
Okay, me, shift here.
Thanks, Gail.
Gail, how many people do we have?
We have three people signed up and two showing in the queue. One moment, I want to check.
I'll add, while, while we're waiting for Gail, I'll add that we also received 14 written public comments. We're taking them both ways due to COVID. So we have 14 written public comments, eight of which were general and not an item otherwise on the agenda. All of those were regarding the ATP project, five comments in favor, three opposed. And then we, we received some written comments on the COVID update and the Climate Action Committee report as well. So those were provided to the City Council before the, just before the meeting.
And those will be posted on the website.
Yes, all the public comments received, submitted for the meeting is posted on the website for each meeting, so.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and we're ready now, if you'd like me to bring in the first person?
Great, thank you.
Okay, and, and the name is Kimiko Tokita. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name, but you are in the meeting. Please unmute your mic and you can go ahead.
Got it. I was wondering if there was any update on the water situation and with everyone being at home with COVID and the water levels? Is that?
So the items on the agenda are, I'm sorry, public comment for items not on the agenda is a chance to give, you know, a public comment about a specific topic, but it's not an opportunity for the city to discuss items not on the agenda.
Okay, well, then I'll just keep listening then. I was just curious about the meeting.
Yeah, and if it's, if you're asking about the, the water litigation, I think we, we are planning to, to have an update on that at the next council meeting prior to the January 29th.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimiko, for coming.
And the next person is Leonard Claye. Mr. Claye, go ahead. If you're muted on your end, please unmute yourself.
I think I'm unmuted, yes?
Yeah.
Thank you, good. First of all, good evening. Before I get to my remarks, Mayor Stix, congratulations on your victory and thank you for serving. Councilmember Francina, good to see you back on the council again.
Oh, thank you.
The, the, when, when Julie was speaking and pronounced Ahai, I, my first thought was, they must be the lost tribe of Israel, because I thought Jews were the ones who went, and said, Holland and Hanukkah.
No, we have that in Holland, too.
I as well. Turning to the reason that I, that I asked to be heard this evening, I happened to tune into the last council meeting and was frankly appalled at the number of people, and, and not even appalled, but, but disturbed by the number of people who came, who came on to speak against the ATP project. So I am speaking in favor of it. My wife, Linda Harmon, asked that I make it clear that I was speaking for both of us. I don't own a bike, and I don't walk nearly enough. I drive. I'm not bragging about this, but I'm simply stating a fact. Nonetheless, this project has my complete support. Among the reasons I support the project are the following. While I'm a driver rather than a pedestrian or cyclist, I recognize I recognize and applaud the fact that the car-centric way we have built our cities is no longer viable model. We need to encourage bikes and walking. Two, Maricopa Highway is clearly an anomaly. Along with the small stretch of Highway 33 through Oakview, it is the only four-lane road in the Ojai Valley, approximately eight tenths of a mile. To hear people actually express concern that somehow turning this little portion of the valley into a two-lane highway will slow evacuation during an emergency is absurd. I have driven this portion of Maricopa several times since the demonstration has started. And the first thing I noted was that I drive slower, as did pretty much everyone else. It's hard to keep one speed at 25 on a four-lane highway that is usually pretty close to empty. It is much easier on a two-lane highway, considering that this is a strip of road with a school, a hospital, numerous offices, and two retail strip malls. Driving more than 25 is particularly dangerous. Police, fire, and hospital personnel have been consulted and I believe have signed off. Which makes sense because emergency vehicles get through Ojai Avenue, which is busier than Maricopa. The manner in which the demonstration project is laid out, with cars, bike parking, and bikes closest to the curb, is new here and will take some getting used to. But they have had this up in portions of New York City, of all places, for a number of years, and drivers learn to cope. Drivers in Ojai will learn to cope and it'll be a safer city as this project becomes permanent. Thank you for taking this step.
Thank you very much, Leonard.
There are no more public comments.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thanks, Gail. Well, can I suggest a two-minute break and then we'll come back for the consent calendar? You guys okay with that?
Yes.
You know, sitting is the new smoking, so everybody needs to stand up.
And I would suggest putting your microphones on mute because we're not able to turn the cameras off.
Councilmembers, just an FYI, what's showing on the screen is the flag for the break period.
Is it just Ryan and I who hung around?
We ready? Waiting for Suzie? Suzie, can you hear us?
They asked us to remember, they asked us to mute while you walked away.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Francina I don't see and Councilmember Blatts I don't see. So we can give them a couple seconds.
Mayor, I just would like to interject something quickly. I don't think that we can allow our city attorney to ever post that picture of himself next to Ryan ever again. There were way too many similarities there. I thought you two were brothers for a minute. It was frightening.
You're a redhead.
As you see, my hair is actually more blonde than red. I think with the photographer, when they took those headshots, it got a little color.
I saw the mayor laugh and I was laughing. It was like, oh my God, look at these two. They're like, they're
I'll have to get that headshot updated, particularly with my quarantine hair, which is, of course, much longer than I would ever let it be normally. But you can't get a haircut right now.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, barber shops and hair salons are closed still, unfortunately. I don't know.
I was gonna say. God bless the black market, huh?
That's one solution.
There's a lot of black markets going on right now.
Yeah. All right, moving right along.
We have to wait for Ryan, right?
Yep. I don't see him. And if he can hear us, we're on, or it looks like. Okay, there we go. Yeah.
Oh, Mayor, I would like to pull item F.
So consent calendar?
Which item, Randy?
Which item?
I have a short, I have a short comment on G, Mayor.
Okay, Randy, you want to start?
We had a move to approve except for items F and G. Is that correct?
That would be North.
Okay.
Second.
And unfortunately, a roll call vote.
Gail?
Okay, Councilmember Wyrick? Mayor Protem Wyrick? Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Heaney?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
So Mayor, on line item F, I just, the only reason I pulled it is, you know, a while ago, this was a very contentious issue here in Ojai. And that was the attendance factor of commissioners. And we went through quite a few discussions on it. And as I reviewed the attendance record this weekend, I just wanted to take a second to thank one, all the commissioners, first of all, for all that they do. Second of all, for the enhanced showing up to meetings. I mean, in the past, we've had commissioners that have had missed eight meetings, four meetings, five, three. And as I reviewed this record, I was very impressed. And we, as individual council members, we get to see them work as liaisons to their commissions. But more importantly, is this just, I just wanted to recognize and say thank you to the commissioners and again for the the great job of showing up and doing the job. I just wanted to take a second to say that.
Especially, if I can chime in, especially during COVID, you know, we have not had, we have had meetings consistently during COVID, when a lot of cities haven't because of the challenges that causes. And the commissioners are showing up and handling business, you know. So it really is admirable.
Thank you.
So do we need a motion to approve F?
Yes, it's to receive and file.
Okay, move to approve F.
Second.
Right. Roll call?
Councilmember Blatts? Councilmember Blatts? Councilmember Heaney?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick? Mayor Protem Wyrick? Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Great.
What about G?
What about G, Bill?
I just wanted to make a very short, but I think positive comment, optimistic comment, in that this preliminary list of things that potentially could allow us to, by reengineering our hardscape inside the city limits, enhance the recharge of the basin. Comes to about 690 acre feet, which is a little more than half the annual total consumption of water inside the city limits. So that's a, I just want to, it's quite meaningful, even though it may seem it's only 698 acre feet. It's still 698 acre feet. And we're not done with the ways of maybe identifying our, how to reengineer our hardscape for better slowing, storing, and recharge. So I was very optimistic. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the receive and file.
I'll second it.
Roll call, Gail?
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Heaney?
Yes.
May I make a comment? You know, I think this is the sort of item that the public would be interested in. And I know that it got on the consent calendar because we ran out of time at the last meeting. And so I don't know what to do about that. If we should have a presentation at some point still.
Yeah. And thank you for bringing that up. I was debating whether to chime in on that. But the reason, so we had it on the last meeting as a discussion item with the presentation plan from Watershed Progressive. We had met with them last week to put it on this agenda. And what we realized is now that we are at January 12th, this was supposed to be a status update, but the actual like drafts are going to be prepared by February. So we decided, rather than have a discussion this week about what's going to come in February and then have another discussion in February, that we would just give the status report and then have the presentation and the discussion in February. So we have it scheduled for the meeting, for the first meeting in February.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Okay, so we can move on to the discussion? Yep. So Watershed Progressive?
No, we're on, I did too.
Okay, so let's move on to COVID report, James?
Yeah, thank you. And I am trying to not have so many PowerPoints, so this is my only one today. So bear with me for one. So so we are here today, it's not showing up the way, the best way, but it works. We wanted to give kind of an update on the latest coronavirus statistics and then a couple of key issues here locally. We mentioned at the last meeting, the last thing we said at the last meeting during the COVID update is that with the vaccines starting to roll out, there's light at the end of the tunnel. But there's still some darkness left before the light at the end, before the light at the end of the tunnel. And so to be, you know, to be frank, that's what we're seeing right now. It really is, I think, December, January, and February are, you know, probably going to be the three most challenging months. Hopefully, they're the three most challenging months because we have seen a surge. And if, you know, the goal is to not let that surge continue and to try to address it. We expected it. We knew that there'd be a surge due to holidays and family gatherings, which is the key spreading event right now. And so we, as a city, pushed that message out aggressively. People probably saw it on Facebook, on Channel 10, on the radio station, on the billboards coming into town. But we were asking people to please do what they can to prevent the spread and to avoid family gathering, you know, gatherings with other households during the holidays. And so that was because we all knew that how quickly this could spread over the holidays if that wasn't done. So these statistics here show, reflect that. You can see on November 10th, which, you know, accounts for March, when this pandemic started, to November 10th. So the first seven months of this pandemic, we had 15,000 cases in Ventura County total. In one month from November 10th to December 15th, that almost doubled to 27,000. And then in one more month from December 15th to January 12th, that almost doubled to 52,000. So, you know, these numbers reflect that risk that we all were aware of with the gatherings among households. So locally, our numbers reflect much the same story. We had 157 cases total over the first seven months. And we've almost doubled that, we almost doubled that from November to December. And then we almost doubled it again from December to January. So the trend is local as well. You know, I think we've been fortunate that we've had fairly low numbers, but we need to be cautious and careful to keep that in check. And so similarly, you can see from the numbers showing that for hospitalizations, for people in the ICU, deaths, all of those are trending upwards during this surge. So I met with the Public Health Department yesterday and they, they have a feeling at this point that that surge should start trending back down after the end of this week. So that's kind of what we're all looking for right now. And hopefully that will, that will occur and it'll start trending in a positive direction. One other point, you'll notice that the testing really increased, or increased where over 800,000 people have been tested. Obviously, that includes some people who have tested more than once. And, you know, and so it's not necessarily, you know, that everybody in the county has been tested. But that's a big chunk in the county, you know, has made the point that the county of Ventura, countywide, has had the highest number of tests in relation to the population. So, you know, some people have said, maybe our numbers are high because we're testing. But, you know, regardless, the reality is the case number is increasing. And we need to do what we can to get that surge under control. And this slide, it just shows it in another form, but it's very similar. Again, you'll notice one quarter of all cases from the beginning, we've had 614 cases in the 93023s at code. One quarter of those have been in the last 14 days. So it really is surging right now. So we all need to be careful and exercise caution and care during this time. So that's kind of the statistics very briefly. We wanted to talk about this because it's something that people are starting to hear more about. And it's a word that causes concern. You know, it's the word outbreak. And we wanted to kind of explain to people what that is and what it means. Because, you know, we've all heard, you know, about potential outbreaks places. And people think that means, you know, huge numbers of cases. A location that has three or more cases within 14 days is considered an outbreak. And so it really does, is not, that doesn't take very much to be considered an outbreak. You know, if one person catches COVID and they go, you know, to, it's typically at a place of business, but, you know, if one person catches COVID and goes to a place of business, it's not hard to imagine spreading to two more people. And that would potentially be an outbreak. So we wanted to kind of put a definition to that term because people hear the word outbreak and think it means, you know, some of these outbreaks that have been reported in LA County and others where there's been, you know, 50 to 100 cases at one location. It's not, when you hear the term outbreak in Ventura County, it is not, you know, you're typically hearing three or four cases essentially at a location within 14 days. And so what that means when there's an outbreak is that the employer or the business needs to report that to county public health. And county public health then designates a person to work with the business and make sure that they follow all the necessary protocols. And one question we've had recently is, is it, you know, is it normal for if there's an outbreak, should the business be shut down? And we want to make, kind of help people understand that that is not the typical protocol. The typical protocol is if there's an outbreak, the Public Health Department contacts that business. Uh ensures that the employees who were affect affected or exposed or um, you know, are monitored, tested, sent home, all of that. Um that um the areas that need to be cleaned uh and um sanitized are, uh, you know, those types of things. But um as this, as this continues, um our most recent discussion with public health when we asked them. You know, are outbreaks um occurring at this point? The answer is yes, widespread outbreaks throughout the county. And um, you know, uh, and you gotta remember with COVID that there is a delay to that. So, you know, people have it for a couple of days. Before it's reported uh potentially. So the reality of it is right now is this is, this is the situation where it and people need to exercise. Care, whether it's, you know, people, other families coming into your household or going to restaurants or businesses. This is something to be cautious of, but it's also something that the county is working with businesses on. And making sure that they follow the appropriate protocols. And one of the things we requested from the county and uh the county this morning. And the Board of Supervisors meeting um stated that they will be doing is starting a um public list of the businesses that have had out. Or that um of locations that have outbreaks with how many cases they have. Um so that people are aware and can, can um, you know, review that, that data. So the county indicated um. That they are going to be doing that. And the reason why we think that's important on a countywide level is because if only. One city is reporting potential outbreaks, people think that other cities are not having outbreaks. But at this point, like, like we said, we've talked to public health and and the, the phrase that they use was there are widespread outbreaks. There's not. One particular location. Um, this is the reality of this surge that we're in. So. So uh we, we kind of just wanted people to understand that. And I think over the next few weeks and months, you'll hear the term outbreaks. And it's not necessarily something to panic about, but it's something uh that we all should be cautious about and careful about when we go out. And just continue to make sure we use hand sanitizers, wear face coverings and take the appropriate precautions. So. So um. As it relates to businesses, um we've received a lot of questions, so we just kind of wanted to go over this. So uh to, to fill everybody in, a lot of people have called recently about what's allowed at restaurants and hotels. And so. We, and a, a couple other businesses, those are the two main ones, but so we wanted to remind everybody that the, the. Four businesses that have closed that we've been asked a lot about under this recent stay at home order is the uh wineries, bars, breweries. And then hair salons, barber shops and personal care, which includes things like massages. Those are closed under the order unless the. There's a couple narrow exceptions for certain procedures that are medical, but um for the, for the most part, those are closed. And then businesses that are modified under the current order uh that are um common in Ojai. Our restaurants, which again can only be takeout or delivery, uh no um. Uh outdoor dining or indoor dining, hotels which could be open for critical infrastructure support. Retail which has to operate at a reduced capacity, places of worship which have to perform outdoor services and then outdoor playgrounds. And so over the last two weeks, over the holidays, we worked closely with restaurants and hotels to try to make sure everybody understood this and, and. Uh got, got businesses into compliance. We had a couple of issues that we had to work closely with the businesses on. But overall, again, uh as compared to uh other parts of the county, we've seen very good compliance. And um and appreciate, you know, the businesses um working with us and following those rules. So. So um. We wanted to just kind of explain that. And then last, uh, there's a couple more things. We also just wanted to remind people uh about the testing every Monday at Sarzadi Park. Um, they've extended those for now through the end of January, but uh with one note that um. Uh Martin Luther King Day, there, there will not be testing, so we'll post that information on our website. But we talked to the county um this week and they're planning to extend it further. They just haven't announced that yet. So. So we still have the COVID testing Monday at Sarzadi Park. Uh and then today we coordinated a big event. People may have seen it. To have an additional testing date uh at Nordoff High School. So people may have seen this trailer out. We had over three hundred people show up to be tested. Uh it was an event coordinated with the county. Um Ojai Hospital and Ojai Unified School District. So we appreciate all, all of those agencies for working with us. And we were able to get employees of all these agencies tested. Plus, we opened it up to the general public. So. So that was a, a positive event. And um. Lastly, uh, I think the big topic on a lot of people's minds right now is vaccines. And um we've been working with the county and meeting with the county and uh on vaccine distribution, which is handled through the. County Public Health Department. And so um there's a lot of talk about this. I think people are aware, the um. The first couple of phases will be focused on hospitals versing um, uh, you know, the healthcare type of. Help, uh, help, healthcare employees, things like that. Um, the county is, is working on tier one. Actually, let me go to, to this page and has vaccinated about fifteen thousand people so far. I think a lot of people are talking about uh the fact that the vaccination is not going as quickly statewide as we hoped it would. I think statewide, they've um sent out three million vaccinations or, you know, doses of vaccination. But um there's still a lot of work to do. So, so we're still on phase one A. Uh, we're about halfway there, fifteen thousand of thirty six thousand total. Uh, people that would be eligible under phase one A have been vaccinated. They're also working with the skilled nursing facilities and the long-term care facilities. Uh to try to make sure to, to be able to get access to all of those people. And so the plan you can see here is phase one A was expected to be from mid-December to late February. And um so, you know, we're not quite where we wanted to be, but the county is working to try to catch up and, and get onto that. Schedule. Uh, phase one B is next, which is seniors seventy five and up. There's forty five thousand that they've identified. And then essential workers, which is gonna be the big chunk, which is a hundred and twenty eight thousand that they've identified. So. And then, and the, the, those numbers are eighty percent of those populations, which is what they expect they'll be able to get achieved. So. So um, those are in progress now. We could also uh note that we have been talking to the county about. Uh making sure we have a vaccination location somewhere in the city and we're working with them on two potential locations. So we should have more to announce on, on that in the next couple of weeks. Lastly, if I, if I can add one more thing is uh, I meant to add it to the slides and didn't have the opportunity, but. The state, uh, the city attorney can, can speak to some of this too, but the statewide eviction moratorium is. Currently expected to expire January thirty first unless it's extended by the, by the state. And um. But I just wanted to take an opportunity to remind everybody that the city, the city for residents within the city who are impacted by COVID. And evicted because of those impacts. We have a eviction moratorium, uh, a city eviction moratorium in place. You can find it on our website, ohicity.org. And um it's, that is in place. Throughout the COVID emergency. So that one is not expiring on January thirty first. So.
Can I ask about that now or should I wait?
Uh, that's the end of the presentation. So um, so I don't have any, anymore.
Okay. I will, can we ask questions now? Okay. Mayor Stix.
Yeah, go ahead, Susan. Sorry.
So James, um, our, our rental eviction moratorium ends in six weeks, which is March first. Am I wrong?
The city. I'll let, I see Matt.
Yeah, so the city's eviction moratorium is tied to the emergency period. So it protects folks through the end of March without doubt. After that, it still protects folks, but they have to start paying. State law requires folks to start repaying back rent as of March thirty first for the year before. So March thirty first. Twenty twenty one, you have to start repaying back rent for the year before. In order to continue to be protected. That piece of our ordinance was preempted by the state, but the ability to continue. Uh in a protected class, protected from eviction for residents who are financially impacted by COVID continues. Blocking tenants from being foreclosed upon for non-payment of rent. If they can, if they make those partial payments as required by the state laws, adjust, as it adjusted our. A local eviction moratorium. And I think we have some information on that on the website. Commercial tenants also are protected. That, there's no state laws have preempted that. So that's just. Uh protects any commercial tenant who has. Evidence of uh inability to pay the rent due to COVID and that continues until six months after the local emergency declaration. And on the sixth month, I should clarify, the protection continues until that period, the local emergency period ends. Then tenants have up to six months to make to repay the back rent owed during the period, the emergency period. We expect some movement in the state that might extend the state moratorium, which is also currently in place for residential tenants, but not commercial tenants. Uh if not extended, that expires the end of this month, uh end of January.
Okay. That's not exactly my question, but that's important information. Okay, my question is this. First of all, do we have any idea how many, many people in Ojai are, were impacted by this? And I don't, I don't need an answer, but. But that leads to my next point. It seems ironic because there are people. That are able to pay their rent. So, so if they are evicted. At my understanding, because I asked about a case, I asked Matt and uh James, that person is not protected. Under our criteria. And I looked up um and I've, uh, it was called to my attention by a, a, a rent, another renter. There, there's a, uh, in like in New York, their criteria is much broader than ours. And so I wanted to uh know if there was any interest. I'm very interested if, if staff could research. That we can, we expand our criteria because there are people who do not, were in a stay home at home order. Yet there are people, there's at least one, I'm sure there's other people, they're being asked to move if they're on a month to month. Uh rent agreement that they, they can, they're not really protected, even though. Uh, we're all, to my way of thinking, it's a, we're all under COVID emergency. Living under that emergency, we, or those emergency restrictions. In order to move. You have to get out into the world, you've got to hire movers, it's, and, and it's, and, and some of these people have, are, they're already under other. Stresses and hardships, even though they may, maybe they had a little bit of money and they were able to continue paying their rent. To get my drift. So I would like to see.
Expanding the eviction moratorium protection more, our, our current order is for those impact. Being evicted because of COVID impact. So it'd be expanding it to those that aren't necessarily impacted by COVID impacts.
Well, that's, but that's.
One clarification, the current.
What I'm, wait, wait, what I'm saying is that we're all impacted by COVID, even if it's not a financial impact. That's what I'm trying to say. And I do, and I have, and I, 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 I did send it to you and I'll send it again. The criteria in, um, I think this is in New York, it, it is just, it just seems much more humane and broad. And so I wanted to see if we could strengthen ours to be. More like that, or at least have a discussion about it. You know, bring it back.
Is that a future agenda item? I mean, we can't even talk about.
I wanted to uh, i- if, if the council was supported, or I could ask again at the end of the meeting. Uh ask that, that staff come back with a future agenda item that strengthens our rental eviction. Not necessarily extend the date or anything like that, so that currently people who, who are, and maybe they're not. Testing positive today, but they could test positive next week and they're being forced to move. You know, it's, it's, we're in a very uncertain. Period. And I would like our renters to be protected, if at all, more protected if at all possible. And this is not unusual. There are other cities that have stronger protections than, than we do. That's.
Add a couple of points or respond with a couple of points. Number one, answer the question from Councilmember Blatts. This is in order. As this item was set for the COVID emergency updates and council could give direction for um considerate, staff to prepare options for consideration. Related to the topic at a future meeting, we would need, of course, uh, at least two members of council to concur with that. And second, as I, the New York statute that's being cited is a New York state law, not a city. We would have to assess whether we as a California city would have the same powers as the state of New York. Uh, as is perhaps evident in my phrasing, we do not have the same powers as the state of New York. But if there was support from another member of council, we'd be happy to assess what could be done. In part, as I understand it, the request is to evaluate. Could the city adopt protections for month, month to month tenancies from being terminated as is presently allowed for a month to month tenancy? Some cities have done so through just cause eviction ordinance. We can look at some options on that if there was support from. At least one other member of council to bring something back.
You know, I um, I, I would support this discussion. Um, because I, I, I agree with Susan. I, I understand the importance. I just, um, I, I don't, I think we have a full agenda tonight. So.
Yeah, yeah.
I would agree that we bring this back with some uh, with some time spent bringing us back information and facts.
Well, and I just want to say, if you want to do that, you have to know that you want to sell your house and you have a renter, no matter when their lease ends. You cannot sell your house unless they voluntarily leave. And it means that there'll be tons of unmarketable properties in this valley. Even if the lease is expired after a year, five years, whatever it is, if you say you can't evict someone on a month to month, then you cannot make them leave if you want to sell your house.
Well, I think that's, I, I think that's, that's facts and that's information that we need to understand.
Yeah. Should we move into, to uh public comments, Gail? Randy, do you have another question for?
Yeah, I, I wanted to go back to um real quick on the uh COVID. You know, my uh, my brother-in-law is a doctor, retired doctor, and he keeps us abreast of everything. And, and uh. He sent us tonight that the vaccine, that they're actually having, have lowered the vaccine uh limit now to sixty five. And um you can contact, you sent me this information, I'll kind of give it to you quickly. You can contact the public, Public Information Office at eight oh five six five four two six four oh. And that's the county of Ventura, eight oh five six five four two six four oh. And it's Ashley Batista. Then the second thing is, um, looking at the calendar. Um, the twelfth, the thirteenth, the fourteenth, the fifteenth, this, and the eighteenth. Are already full. So people are aware of this. And right now, the twenty first. I'm sorry, the nineteenth, the twentieth, the twenty first through the twenty ninth are open. So uh that means. I guess I'm a senior um with pre-existing conditions. Um, we are now eligible. And I just wanted to let the community know that. And that's the information to go to. I know, James, that you, you're a, you're um. What you shared with us tonight was at seventy five, but it has now been lowered to sixty five. So I think that's important for this community.
Excellent. Yeah, and we'll, we'll also post some updates that, you know, everything changes very quickly. So we'll, we'll post that and then we'll post other updates. I think they're gonna be expanding the program quickly.
Could I go back for a moment?
Why don't we, why don't we ask, uh, ask the mayor to do the comments before we have a discussion?
What I'm trying to do. Okay, yeah, before we go anymore, anybody have any more questions for staff? Because uh then we'll go to public comments. No more questions?
Oh, I guess I should ask, is it clear that Randy supported my request?
Yes.
So, yeah. And that could include how it affects real estate, because it's hard to believe that in New York, they can't do any real estate. So I'm wondering about that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to include both, you know, both aspects.
Thank you.
Okay, Gail, public comments?
We have no speakers, uh, public comments for this item.
Okay, great. Well, we can bring it back to discussion then.
Mayor Stix, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Bill.
I would like to uh emphasize that um my one concern listening to the Board of Supervisors meeting today. Was the discussion by the people managing. was the discussion by the people managing, administering the vaccines, that they, I think the paraphrase, the comment, well, we don't have places all over the county, we want to, they kind of wanted to centralize. And I don't think that's good. I think, why do we want people to have to unnecessarily travel and take time, especially senior populations? When we could have community-based vaccine administration, so I, I know, James, we've already talked about this, and I really just want to say publicly, I hope we support James in offering, aggressively offering a community-based vaccine administration point, and, and kind of push back a little bit on that what I heard at the Board of Supervisors in terms of wanting to quote-unquote centralize the vaccine administration.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, and we're, we're working with them, we actually are meeting with them Friday to, to look at two locations within the city, so we're working with them actively, and I, you know, we made all those same cases that, you know, are, we have a, a large senior population, and we're fairly remote, so we think that it is
And, and many of that senior population doesn't drive, or probably shouldn't drive a long distance, and I think we'll get higher percentages of participation if it's community-based vaccination. My comment, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any, any other comments? Thank, thank you, I'd just like to say big thank you to James for all this work that you've been doing, your diligence and all these hours, so appreciate it, keeping us safe. Okay, well, we, can we move on to the climate committee?
Yes.
Yes, okay, let's do it, okay. James?
All right, no, no PowerPoint for this one, I know everybody's disappointed, but yeah. I'll, I'll kind of give just a brief background, and then, and then we'll open the discussion up, but on, the city formed, the city was the first city in the county to form a climate emergency mobilization committee, and we did so just over a year ago on December tenth twenty nineteen. At that time, the city council approved a charter for the committee, which identified it as an ad hoc committee with a six-month term. The council and the committee, at that time, set up the committee as ad hoc to allow them to move quickly, and to ensure that they were not bogged down with unnecessary requirements or things, you know, things like the Brown Act, for example, which I, I don't mean it as a, as an unnecessary requirement, but and so the council identified it as an advisory committee with a limited term. And again, provided that they could move quickly in response to the city's recent emergency climate declaration. So fast forward about six months, and in June of twenty twenty, the city council received an interim report from the committee. The, the council reviewed that report with the committee and extended the committee for another six months to tonight. The, the term was extended to January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. So I reached out recently to the committee to, to receive an updated report, which is included and attached to the staff report. The committee at that time requested an additional one-year extension to continue work on key priorities such as the greenhouse gas inventory that is in, that is, has been started, and to continue work on the climate policies for the general plan update, for example. So the item is here today because without being extended, the committee essentially would, you know, is, the, the term ends today. So council's request, or the committees requested an extension. Council today can review the committee and the bylaws and choose to extend the term, to not extend the term, or to identify changes to the charter or process. Such as requiring that the, that the meeting, that the committee makes some changes to how the meetings are held or called, or requiring that they be public meetings. We, we made this recommendation about six months ago from the staff level that typically, our rule of thumb is when a committee extends to over six months, it's good practice to to require it to be subject to the Brown Act. We noted at that time that council has some discretion and can identify some things that would help address those concerns, and council did so. But at this time, with the additional one-year extension, that's a key issue for, for discussion. And with that, I think, quickly, if I could ask the city attorney to just give some background on that issue, which I think is a key issue.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Vega, Mayor and Council. The issue of ad hoc committee, the Brown Act Committee, the Brown Act does not directly contemplate ad hoc committees. Rather, they're defined by the negative space. They're defined by what's not in the definition of legislative body. And the key is continuing subject matter jurisdiction. To qualify as an ad hoc committee not subject to the Brown Act, we'd have to prove that the, the committee has no continuing subject matter jurisdiction. Typically, we do that by having a short duration and a defined endpoint for its existence, so it's either return in six months with a report, or meet for up to six months and, and work on a document, or return when you've negotiated the X contract or the Y land deal. And we've used those in the past for two members of council to negotiate a particular contract or particular land deal. Here, if the committee is to continue, my recommendation is that it be subject to the Brown Act, and thereby operate in public in full transparency, because the committee is composed of members beyond just the city council. The committee is, at least, if it were simply extended in time, but not otherwise adjusted, would have an open-ended continuing subject matter jurisdiction regarding solutions to solve the climate change issue, or, or at least to help make it better solving is a big picture. And it's not clear that there'd be any specific task that would be overturned, a single thing that would be completed that would justify its existence as an ad hoc committee. And it would be promotion, it would, you know, thereby promote transparency. I'll note that a concern has been raised that it's difficult to operate under the Brown Act, that it's not as nimble, or it's not as efficient. And that's certainly a valid concern, I, you know, I spend a lot of time, as we all do, in Brown Act meetings, and they're not the most efficient way to operate government. So that's certainly a point to consider. If the council's inclined to allow it to continue to exist not subject to the Brown Act, then I very strongly recommend including some, some additional structures to limit its, to limit its operations to really create the facts to show that if it is ever challenged, it is indeed an ad hoc committee. That would include a limited time duration, that would include a limited purpose charter, that would include a limited a trigger for when its existence ceases and it returns to council. If the intention is to create a continuing body to advise the council on this matter, then my recommendation would be to structure it as the Brown Act. So that's, hence the choices before you, and, and really, it turns on, what is the structure, what is the charge that dictates Brown Act or not?
A question. May I ask a question, Mayor? It, it sounded like you were saying that the first option, okay, so, so if I'm inclined to allow the committee to continue to function as an ad hoc committee, and, and, and we could, it sounds like we could ask for like a report every three months, or something of that nature?
It couldn't be permanent, it would have to be a time-limited committee, three months, six months max.
Okay, so one year is not possible.
I would not recommend that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I, I know, I wanted to clear, clear on that, but three months and six months, or six months is legally permitted under a list of a criteria.
Each additional period of time raises the risk of, of the operations being found to not qualify as an ad hoc committee. No hard pass line.
Okay, and are they, are they going to be speaking tonight, are they in the waiting room?
Yeah, I believe Jim Selman is, is, is available to speak if there's any questions for the committee.
Okay, so I, I, I wanted to hear what, you know, I want to, I guess, do we do?
Well, any other questions for staff? Nobody, okay, Gail, public discussion?
We have one
Oh, comments?
Public commenter? If you'd like me to bring her in now?
Be great, thank you.
Okay. Eva Beebe is our public commenter, Eva, if you're there, you should be able to speak now. You might want to unmute your microphone. Eva? There, you should be
Hello?
Yeah.
Hi. I just have a small thing to say. I would really, really appreciate if the emergency mobilization climate committee could stay in place as a working committee, because I think that's really important, and yeah, I'm just speaking for the youth of Ojai.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Gail?
Yep, that's it.
So bring it back for discussion?
Wait, I thought that Jim Selman was waiting.
Yeah, we could have him now, council wants.
Okay, if you'd like, I can bring him in.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. It'll take me a moment. Okay, Mr. Selman, you should be able to speak now.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. First of all, I want to, on behalf of the entire committee, thank you very much for the opportunity that you provided for us to participate in this very important issue over the last year. I also want to thank the dozens of people who contributed to the interim report that we put together and have informally basically been a part of this extended conversation around what Ojai can do in the face of this climate emergency. I also would like to say that it's been our hope in this work from the beginning that the issues of climate and our love for this valley, in addition to whatever one might, particular recommendations we've made, is really an opportunity for an ongoing dialogue and unifying conversation around the future of, of not just this valley, but our quality of life. So with that, thank you, I want to take, on behalf of our committee, a couple of moments to just share three or four points about why we strongly, strongly urge leaving us as an ad hoc, or at least as a working committee. And it specifically has more to do with the nature of our work. As you may have recalled, the justification or rationale for us being an ad hoc committee in the first place is that the nature of what we were trying to do was more of an extension of staff, the kind of work that would normally be done by staff or by consultants, that it's much more oriented towards project, that we've never been, nor are we contending to continue to be, a deliberative body. We have, we have worked as a team since the beginning, we have never taken a single vote on a single issue or a single recommendation. Everything that we've said has been a consensus and one that has evolved in the course of our, of our conversations and our work. In the twenty twenty-one time period as it comes, when we look at our work plan, or what we intend, or what we see as the work that needs to be do, be done, it's my primarily technical. It's, it's, it's working with the greenhouse gas inventory, which needs to be done for any, any rigorous decision-making that you all may choose to do in the future. It's working with the developing policy for the general plan related to climate or energy. It's also, and this is, was not mentioned by James, but it's very important, which is there's a number of funding initiatives by federal and state authorities and agencies which are going to be designated, we understand, for quote shovel-ready cities. And there were cities like Ojai that are at the forefront of taking responsibility for their environmental policies and practices, or their climate-related environmental policies and practices, are going to be more likely to receive grants from these various authorities if they have the wherewithal and the bandwidth to do the necessary grant writing and analysis and thinking that goes into those kinds of grant requests. So we, we, we anticipate that one of the kinds of work that our committee will be undertaking is to support James and the staff in making grant requests for funding for Ojai that could make a big difference from just a financial budgetary point of view. But the nature of that work, it's project-oriented work, it's not, it's not the the work has not lent itself to generalized input. I also would like to say very clearly, and I think you heard me say this in the last time I spoke, we are totally committed to openness and transparency, and we are totally open to receiving input from anybody, anytime. And I think we've demonstrated that in the past with our workshops, and when we had in-person meetings, people dropped into our meetings and so forth, so there's no intention here for secretive deliberations, it's just the nature of the, of the kind of work that we need to do and be very facile and very continuous on it. The kinds of constraints that come with, with the Brown Act, I think potentially delay or potentially even undermine the quality of some of that kind of work and thinking. Our group is, is constituted by some extraordinary volunteer expertise, and we would like very much to be able to leverage that in the most efficient and powerful way we could possibly. The the bottom line is, we would like to continue, and we'd like to participate in this ongoing discussion. We are mixed in terms of whether our group is really thinks that we can do our work if we are, are put into the Brown Act category. Now, I, I think that if, if what the, the attorney is saying, we need an endpoint, we're fine if you want to give us a six-month endpoint, or a year input, or whatever the, the law would allow for. But I think anyone who were to examine the nature of what we're doing and the products that we have delivered, would certainly, I don't think, suggest that there's any particular agenda or bias here. We have been open and thorough in all of our conversations and work related to climate and the various recommendations that we ended with. The only thing else I'd say about that is that we, we have used some criteria, such as we only wanted to take those recommendations which we thought would have some meaningful impact. So there were lots of things that one could imagine doing in the environmental or climate area, that would be symbolic perhaps, but not make much difference. So we don't presume that this is an all-encompassing everything that could be done. But the things that we are saying should be done, and the ones that we've been working for are the ones that we think have the biggest impact either on the community and/or the larger regional area, or perhaps as symbolically, in many cases, an expression of the council's leadership in this area for other communities throughout the state and potentially even the nation. So that's our view, is we would, we appreciate the opportunity so far. We'd like to continue to make that contribution, and our strong request is that we be exempted from the Brown Act and continue as a working committee supporting the staff of Ojai.
Thank you, Jim, grateful for all the work you've done. Susie, you have a question for Jim?
Jim, could, could you stay on the call while I ask Matt a question, because then I might go back and ask you something.
Sure.
Matt, Matt, are we allowed to call it a working committee?
Brown Act doesn't contemplate working committees. That's not, that's not a term that exists in the Brown Act. I recognize it's how it functions, but it's not
My question, you can't go from ad hoc to working, it has to be, it has to, they, if, if we, if they're not a Brown Act committee, then the only category is ad hoc, is that correct?
Yeah, and even ad hoc also isn't in the Brown Act, the Brown Act defines legislative body. So if they hit the triggers to be a legislative body, then any, any, any public, council-appointed body that hits those triggers is subject to the Brown Act. It doesn't directly, it doesn't directly contemplate an ad hoc committee, rather, it's defined by the negative space. That's where it goes back to, if it's this, if it's this no continuing subject matter jurisdiction piece, then it can, can exist as an ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committee is more of the, 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 the term of reference used to reflect what that means. It's defined by what's defined and what's left, what's left as an ad hoc committee, which is, is you know, it's, it's an option, sure. But it's not a working committee, there's, there's nothing, there's no difference between working, working committee and ad hoc committee. Neither exists directly under the Brown Act, and the negative space allows an ad hoc committee to function with the constraints I described earlier.
Then my other question of James is, if it were a Brown Act committee, which I'm not in favor of, how much staff time does that add? Approximately, if they were to meet once or twice a month?
To meet once or twice a month, we'd have to put an agenda together, you know, a week prior.
you know, a week prior or so. So it'd probably be a couple hours to put the agenda together and a couple hours for the meeting. So it would take some staff time.
Randy, you have a question?
Yeah, I need to ask Matt, what is the Complete Streets Committee?
The Complete Streets Committee is formally a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. It is subject to the Brown Act because it has a continuing subject matter jurisdiction, and it meets on a regular basis with, as I recall, a defined meeting schedule. And its members were appointed by a legislative body. The Planning Commission is itself a legislative body underneath the city council. And the Complete Streets Committee thus is subject to the Brown Act, and its meetings are on an agenda that I understand is posted on the city's website.
So its meetings are recorded? There's minutes?
There's minutes, but they're not recorded.
I don't believe they're on video, but I know that there are minutes kept.
What I'm trying to get at is, you know, I sat on the committee for cultural resources, and it lasted three years. And I'm trying to remember what, if it was a standing committee appointed by council, it had two members.
As I recall, with the Cultural Resources Committee, it came in two flavors. The first flavor was the short-term ad hoc committee, that was two members of the council and those advising them. The second flavor was two members of the council and those advising them. That one lasted longer. And as I recall, at one point, we opened up the second version to the public, although I don't know how much attendance we had.
Yeah, we did. We did do that. We still had two council members. So I guess what I'm trying to do is
Any other questions for Jim?
I have a question, if I could ask one.
Well, I'm gonna bring Jim. Well, Jim, hear this conversation. What I'm trying to look at is, is there a way to keep these, this group nimble the way they would like to be, but put them under a governing body? So right now, they report directly back to council. I was trying to think if we had them report to planning, was there a way that, that as a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, could they do, could they work the way they would like to work? That's the question I was just throwing out there.
And I have a related question.
I'll answer the first question from Councilmember Rehan. If they were to continue with a continuing jurisdiction and not a defined limited basis, then that would not allow them to continue to operate outside the public eye, even if they were put underneath the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So I didn't understand the last, Mayor Sticks, may I speak? Let me get my, okay, two questions, Matt. I didn't understand what you just meant about not in the public eye, because the public is allowed to attend. And secondly, would it make a difference if two council members attended?
So as I understood the request from the committee, it is to be able to operate, i.e. to hold their meetings without the public present. That's not what you just asked for. So there's
I thought the public is allowed to
The public is not allowed, does not attend, and is not allowed to attend the ad hoc climate emergency committee meetings.
That's not correct.
Okay, then I don't understand how they operate.
Well, when we were meeting in person, we were on the website. We told them when we had meetings, and they could show up or not show up. Then that is there was no, there was no particular requirement for them to speak, and if they wanted to speak, they could speak. And we didn't, we didn't, we didn't require it, and we could also have a meeting without them. So it was mixed.
So, so how is the public notified?
James, you remember?
It's on the website, I thought.
What we were doing up until the pandemic, and it was when they were gonna have a meeting, we posted on the climate committee page. So there wasn't any mailing list or anything, but if somebody was interested, they could check the climate committee page and attend. And it was, that's fairly lax, but it's because it was an ad hoc committee, you know, identified at that time. Since the pandemic, I don't know that that's been publicly posted. I don't think we have posted it since then. I think
And has the public been able to participate in the Zoom? I'm assuming they're meeting by Zoom now?
No.
I don't think so.
So then, so then there's the answer. The public was invited at some time, but was not invited at other meetings. And that would be the question.
So can I ask Jim? Jim, could you, in case it makes a difference, you could open the meetings, correct?
We have no problem if people want to drop in our meetings. With the Zoom and the pandemic kind of structure, it's not been very convenient. In some cases, we do a very spontaneous meeting if there's a particular issue. Sometimes our meetings are, you know, one or two or three of us are only there. So there's been no particular rigor at all around excluding or including people since we've been on Zoom. But I don't think, I think no one in the committee would resist if people want to show up. But it would be, I think, like James said, an informal notification on the climate page. But I'd have a question for Matt, if you wouldn't mind my asking, which is, you keep talking about the term you keep talking about the term jurisdiction. That word in my mind implies authority and control. Again, I want to emphasize, we're not a decision-making body. We have no authority. We simply work on behalf of staff at the council, and as a consequence, there's no particular impact from our work, other than what the council chooses to do with whatever we say.
Happy to respond to that point. The Brown Act defines legislative body as quote, "any commission, committee, board, or other body of a local agency, whether permanent or temporary, decision-making or advisory, created by charter, ordinance, resolution, or formal action of a legislative body." Legislative body is itself defined to mean the city council. So I appreciate the point that the climate committee, in its existence so far, has operated as an advisory body. That, however, does not change the game for the Brown Act. An advisory or decision-making body created by formal action of the city council, as was done here by the resolution that created this committee, is subject to the Brown Act unless we can make the findings that it is somehow an ad hoc committee with this limited time duration and limited continuing subject matter jurisdiction. Apologies, speaking of climate goals, auto light off. I was on, so I keep using the phrase continuing subject matter jurisdiction, because that's the phrase used in the Brown Act. It contemplates, if there is continuing subject matter jurisdiction, then that creates a situation for the body to fit that definition that I cited, or read, rather, of legislative body.
Thank you.
Mayor Sticks?
Yeah, Suzha?
Matt, I did ask, does it make a difference if two council members attend the meetings?
No, because what matters is the members of the body that was created by the council. So two council members can attend any meeting at any time, because two members is less than three. Three or more can attend any other Brown Act body meeting. So to a certain extent, if the committee, if the council wants to attend the meetings of the climate emergency committee, and if the climate emergency committee is itself under the Brown Act, then any member of council can attend, even all five could attend the other meeting, provided they only participate in the matter within the confines of the existing Brown Act meeting. And I suppose it's worth emphasizing, or worth noting, there are two options. And option under the ad hoc committee option would be short time duration, defined subject matter, and defined, what's the end, defined endpoint. Option two would be under the Brown Act, could continue indefinitely, could continue to have a permanent existence. And in terms of what does the Brown Act mean, it's the things that we're familiar with as a council. Its agenda's out 72 hours ahead. It's an opportunity for public comment, and it's sticking to the items that are on the agenda, which can be worded broadly, particularly for those that aren't making decisions where there's less likely to be litigation.
So if I were can I ask another question?
I was just gonna do a point of order. Are we closing the public hearing and deliberating now?
We're still asking questions at this point.
Okay, all right.
A question, Ryan?
No, I was just gonna make a motion, but if we're still asking questions.
Are we finished with, Suzie, you have another question, or can we move on to discussion?
Okay, my question is this. If I were to make a motion, could you help me with the wording to word the things you just mentioned about the time and the end thing, or would that require that we?
Well, again, point of order, we should close a public hearing before we deliberate, and motions are deliberations.
For the questions, we can move on to discussion? Yeah, yes?
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right, so the public hearing is closed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
Love that orange.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have one real quick question for Matt. Matt, the way we set this up before, was there any problem with it?
The way we set it up before was low risk because it had a six-month duration. The risk was slightly higher when we extended it six more months, but it was unlikely to raise any issues given the pandemic and the likelihood of any reviewing body being a bit more lighter touch. That risk goes up significantly.
Well, I'll make a motion that we do the same thing we did before and continue it for another six months.
I'll support your motion.
Okay, can we have a vote?
A discussion on the motion?
Right.
Could we have discussion on the motion?
Yeah, sure.
I think Randy had a comment. I think Betsy was trying to tell Randy to talk. I don't know.
I just wanted to clarify something that Jim was saying about the committee. And I think it plays into what we're trying to achieve. I would agree with extending the motion only after having the committee come back and give us a specific topic that they are going to come to some conclusion on in six months. So I was gonna ask you to amend your motion in that manner that would stipulate that climate committee comes back, they're specific as to the task they're gonna champion, and that they have a finale in that six-month period to us. Now, the other thing we could, so that would be my amendment, but I still have a couple more things I'd like to add, but
I'll say, Randy, I don't have a problem amending it. The only thing is, if they have to deliberate to decide what their topic is, then they're in existence. And I don't know how to deal with that. And then the other one is, is it not sufficient? Is that what you're saying? It's not sufficient to just be a climate emergency mobilization committee? You want something more specific than that, that is their focus?
Well, I'm trying to stay within the guidelines of what Matt and James have proposed regarding a duration. So we don't have to approve extending their committee until they come back to us with something that's, with some specificity to what they're going to achieve. So they could come back to the next council meeting and take 10 minutes and say, these are the four things we're gonna do. This is number one, and we're gonna have it back to you within six months. That's why, when they looked at the general, when I heard them talk about general plan update, that's a two-year, a year to two-year mission. You know, that's not an ad hoc committee. So I don't know if that's be something that we would want them to participate in as a climate committee, more as an individual participant in the general plan update. But I think we could ask them to be specific. That's all I'm saying.
I have a, Mayor Sticks?
Yeah, Bill?
I'd like to add a concern that listening to how the climate group is met and how they've operated, they have put demands on staff time. And our normal protocol I know, that damn, that, that, darn phones. You know, our protocol has been that before commissions make use of staff time in terms of researching policy direction, that that comes to council for approval as a policy priority, because it's important for this body to, you know, to some degree, manage the demands on staff time. And so what I'm hearing is that they, you know, at the very least, I think there should be, whether it's Brown Act or not, the problem I have with the motion is it doesn't definitely specify that proper noticing should be made, whether it's Brown Act or not, to offer the opportunity for public communicate, a public opportunity and public participation. And that's not clear, and I think that's very important to me, that there be the opportunity for proper noticing and public participation, whether it's a Brown Act body or not. And I'm also very concerned about open-ended management of staff time, that they, that we have some kind of regulation of the demands on staff, and not just be, as they say, they want to be a staff, an extension of staff, without us having any say about the demands they might be making on staff time.
Andy?
I agree with Bill on that, and I think that's a very important issue. I think probably my biggest concern about this committee is the fact that it's not noticed, so therefore, I don't know how to come to their meeting. And Jim was clear on that. Sometimes there's three of them in a meeting, or sometimes someone calls up and says, hey, let's meet next week. There's no posting, so to me, there's no public involvement, and that was clearly demonstrated in the REACH Code. The fact that by the time it came to council, that's when we heard all of the disagreements and all the arguments against it. Whereas if it was vetted, and they, and vetted openly, received public input, and then again, that's what I was trying to say, how can I get it into planning? How can we get it vetted somewhere before it comes to us? So that's my concern, is the, is public involvement rather than five individuals recommending what they believe is best, and I believe these five individuals are good people. But it clearly demonstrated in the REACH Code that we did not reach out, obviously, to the community. And we did not get a great, a great code. We got a good ordinance, but not a great one. So that's, I have a big concern with that.
Suzha? I have a question of James, but I want to make a comment. The REACH Code, I do feel, was because the mayor was leaving, and that was something he wanted to get done. Normally, I think there would be more outreach before, but there were, it was an exception. You know, I don't think that they would, I don't think they want to function like that either. But my question of James is, do you know off the top of your head how much staff time they've taken? Because I was, I know they've saved staff time also with their work, but how much time have they asked for?
I would say, you know, right now, because it is operating as an ad hoc and fairly lax, I would say that, you know, there's some staff time spent just posting the information and making that available to the public. And then I think with the REACH Codes in particular, you know, I met with the committee a few times to try to, you know, put that item together. So, you know, there hasn't been a huge dedication thus far. So, you know, I think it's something to consider as we talk about, you know, how much staff resources do you use supporting it moving forward? I think that's a good question.
So we could stipulate, then, when it's more than just posting, that if they're anticipating a lot of staff time, that it comes to council first?
Yeah, and I think that that is something, you know, what I see is when each of these recommendations start to get fully vetted, that's like the REACH Codes were, that's when it's gonna start using staff time. So I think we do need to, we need to identify a process for when those items get ready. We need to know right away if the council supports spending that time on those items. Otherwise, we have staff spending time on something that, you know.
Isn't the way you know that we decide to put it on an agenda? Because they don't put anything on the agenda. When we tell you to put it on the agenda, then that takes it from a committee issue to the staff working on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. I think, you know, one of the points Councilmember Francina just made is the REACH Codes were a very, you know, very unique item, so maybe we shouldn't use that as the standard. I think that one, we were spending time before it came to council, you know.
Well, and I think under any of this, they're not a committee. You're not authorized to just have to answer to them. So James, I think the answer here is the authority lands with you to decide how staff time's allocated to them. If the answer's none, I don't expect every decision of staff time to have to come back through the whole every decision of staff time to have to come back through the whole council. But I'd expect you to have the authority to say, no, we're not going to work on that right now. We got other stuff to do.
Yeah. And that works. And I think we'll just we'll have to know that when an item comes forward, the first time around, it's coming forward. You know, at a high level for council direction to spend time on it and not not coming forward the first time to be adopted. So.
Well, my my thinking is that we vote on Ryan's motion. And then we I I I believe that they will respond to our requests. You know, they're they're not, they want, you know, we want to work together and Randy's point about I forget what it was, but it sounded very reasonable. And I believe that they'll that if whatever we ask of them, that's reasonable, I think they'll do it.
Question, Mayor Sticks, about the wording of the motion?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Does the wording of the motion include a stipulation of noticing all of their meetings? To the public?
No. Whatever the, I mean, I don't mind adding that. The
I I I'm asking whether that would be an amendment you'd accept to the motion that all their meetings be
That's fine. In fact, I said before, I think when we passed this before, it was required that their meetings were public. I think it just
They did not adhere to noticing their meetings.
Well, I think that it may have, I mean, I'm with you, Bill. I think you're right. I think we did include that originally. But I think it was they were open because they were, you know, meeting in person and then maybe when
When they went Zoom, they they stopped noticing all the meetings.
It fell off during during COVID, yeah.
I think that was baked into the original one. I I have no interest in having any group of people advising us that isn't open to the public. That that doesn't make any sense. If we're going to have otherwise, that's just a group of people that don't need us to sit here and debate about it forever. They can just go sit in the living room somewhere and decide what they want.
This motion would include the the understanding that they would be noted properly noticing all meetings, whether virtual or otherwise.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and they have to be open to the public. In fact, originally, when we went through this, as I'm thinking back, they were going, they wanted to have a couple meet. Well, what they originally said, they didn't want every meeting open to the public, but then they were going to host public workshops and meetings specifically after they'd gotten their feet underneath them. We we organized this in that original way with all of these issues taken care of. I'm not going to blame them. COVID derailed everything a little bit, but where we were when we started this is I see this as a deep dive, expert level, complex issue that we need help on, and this is not a deliberative body to make decisions. It is kind of an advisory group. And I know, Matt, that's not in the Brown Act either, but I'm making up some new terms. And as an advisory group of experts, they should be open to the public. Debate in public. They don't, they're not subject to the Brown Act. But then when they come to us, and under the first one, it sounds like they went to Johnny. Johnny put it on the agenda. If they come and get it on the agenda, then it's staff time. If it's not on the agenda, then the staff shouldn't really do much.
I I just want to be clear. I understand is going forward, all meetings are noticed. That's all I want to know.
Yeah, I I agree with that. I think that's that should be
That's in the motion.
Now in the motion.
And I think the key word here is emergency, because we do have an emergency. So whatever we can do. Yeah, Randy?
Yeah, that was, I I think I had a big debate about that term. When we initiated this committee, but, you know, I'm trying to figure out how to support these folks because they're good people. But again, if someone's going to notice a meeting and I can't and I can't get to the notice, that means I can't get to the meeting. And that bothers me. It just bothers me.
Well, I'm sure
Concerned about how these meetings are noticed, when, who, why, where, and and how we do that. So I have a concern with that. The second concern I have is, and I and I don't know why it doesn't concern the rest of you, is why give why give this broad path to allow these five to go do something? Why can't we ask them to come back? They focused on four specific areas. Have them come back to one of those areas and specifically tell us what they're going to do and go do it.
I I I did include
I've lost on why we don't want that.
I Randy, I I had, I wanted to say what you just said. I'm just saying that we vote tonight. And then we ask them to come back with that. If we don't have enough trust in these people to come back with that without delaying two weeks where they're in limbo and you know, then something's wrong. I trust them that they will come back. You know, with with what you just said. I just can't articulate it again.
I have a question of that, Randy. Didn't isn't that kind of what they did? I mean, they went, they debated, they came back with the with the gas code, they convinced someone who could get it on agenda. Once they brought it back to someone, if you get it on agenda, it got elevated to the agenda.
Well, what I'm trying to say is they they didn't do that on the front end. They could have came to us with four with four areas that they needed to that they would like to investigate to enhance the the emergency or to affect the emergency climate issues that we have in our community. We never got that. All of a sudden, they're off working on something. Next, you know, someone elevates it to an agenda. Next thing you know, we're having a discussion on reach codes. So all I'm saying is, let's put what is it? Let's put the donkey in front of the cart rather than the cart in front of the donkey. Let's know what they're going to do. I don't think that's not fair. And let's the experts that we're all claiming them to be, go do their thing. And let them get back to us in a timely manner with a conclusion. I I don't know why, again, and I think we're all in agreement, that's what we want. Or is that what we're willing to say and then hold them to?
Sure. And, you know, and their three big, they're pretty focused on three big goals, like greenhouse, gas inventory, the grant proposals, and the general plan update. So I'm sure we can, I'm sure be we can get more details and more concrete deadlines for that. You know, I think the key, though, is to realize that we are have been gifted with five experts in this field. And I mean, we're so lucky to have their work. And so we really feel strongly that we need to support them in in whatever way we can. And yes, follow the law and do what we need to do. These details that we brought up about noticing and having concrete goals. That can be
And public engagement. Yeah, you know, Randy, I I will say this. If I didn't know how the gas ordinance process went down, I would be thinking, wait a minute, why do we need all this? But thinking back, the process, the procedure as we went through could have been much, much improved. And there was some real, there's still some anxiety in the public over that. I mean, this is one issue, you know, and I'm thinking about it more, Randy, and I and I have to say, you're absolutely right. This is the one decision that I have been involved in on this council where I pissed off both sides really, right? The environmental people said you made too many carve outs, and everybody else said, why did you do a gas reach code? And both sides were unhappy at the end of the day. Some inside of that were happy. Most weren't. I don't like that because I will defend what we did as a council, consistent with what every climate committee member told me personally. And I think what we did was the most appropriate ordinance for our community at this time. But I I agree with you. I don't like the idea that I can say that wholeheartedly in that we really didn't have any consensus to get there because it was really it was really procedurally choppy for the nicest way I can describe it. So I think if we can clean up some of those procedure items with notice and a little more public input and a little bit better idea what's coming down the pipe rather than the way it went last time, I think that could be very beneficial.
I'd be happy to be a liaison between council and and climate committee.
And they all this to them, yeah.
All right, well, are you ready for? We have a motion?
Just kind of point of order. Should we actually state what the motion is?
Now, six more months with mandatory notices for all their meetings and public, you know, and the ability of the public to be there for meetings, whether they're on Zoom or otherwise. And I don't know, Randy, what are you, what are you looking for as far as a timeline? It sounds like you want
To come back to council within 30 days.
Good. And 30 days, they have to come back to council with some guidance on what directions they're heading, so we can give them a heads up on what I think, you know, to tell them whether those are worth exploring from a preliminary basis, rather than get all the way into a deep dive.
You know, and also, and also quickly, you know, the benefit of that is also that it's a it's a public meeting. It's clearly communicated to the community. And the ones that really want to be a part of that discussion, you know, now that it's publicly noticed, will figure out how to get to that group. Right now, it's, well, we just know we got a group and they're working.
I'm clear on the motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Okay, all right. And we have a second. Yeah, so ready for voting, Gail?
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Just like the reach code moving forward. Yes.
Okay. Great. All right. So then we'll move right along to the council reps. Number four.
Yeah, I I can give just a brief, brief report on that. Is every year typically in January, the first meeting in January, we have an item on the agenda that allows the council to discuss assignments and appointments to 14 local county and regional boards. We also typically discuss appointment to one city of Ojai Board, which is the Budget Committee. This year, we several months back, it said after the election that we'd also want to talk about the Complete Streets Subcommittee, and if there was any desire there to to standardize some sort of appointment to that. So that has is included as well in this item. So council can discuss that if it desires. And with that, the item, that that's it. The the item is on the agenda for council to make those appointments.
Great. Thanks, James. Okay, so we just go start going down the list. The first one is California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, which I will
Where are you? Am I on the wrong page?
Per the attachment, it's the first one on the attachment.
And I'll just Attachment A, page one of four, Susan.
Oh, you're on page. Okay, I was, okay, I got it.
And Gail, can you just confirm that? I I doubt there's any public comment, but can you confirm that?
That's correct. There's no public comments.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so I'll take that one as the mayor.
I think you have to.
That that CGP I item is the mayor's dictate.
Yes.
It's my pleasure and honor. Thank you. The Clean Power Alliance, I would love to continue and follow along in Johnny's footsteps.
Can I make a a comment on that? I I I would like to have a council member named as alternate to you as the representative. I think that would be a good step forward.
On the CPA?
Yeah, have a have a alternate backup to Mayor Sticks on that. I think, is there a volunteer for that?
On that one, we can choose up to two alternates. So for that board, and I, you know, current currently, the current alternate is Michelle Ellison.
Right. I I think a council member should be the alternate on that one personally.
On this, are you? Are you on? What happened to the, are you on the Clean Power?
Clean Power, Clean Power Alliance.
So I was just wondering if if I have a stronger feeling about a council member being an alternative. I I don't have a, I was hoping someone would volunteer for that. I would volunteer if no one else wanted to be alternate, but I would certainly be open to someone else being alternate.
Looks like you got it, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Then I'll look forward to working with you.
As I, as I do I.
For the first turn ultimate for the first one?
Clean Power Alliance.
What happened to the Insurance Authority?
That's already done.
No alternate. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then the City Selection Committee, I am doing that. And the Ventura County Animal Services.
I would like to continue.
Okay, great. And Randy, do you want to keep being the the alternate?
Don't worry.
No, as Susan's passion, I I I enjoy the fact that she enjoys that. And it's a good thing. It really is a it's a good group.
Okay, the Economic Development Collaborative.
Yeah, I I've been doing that for a while. I'd be very happy to have someone else be the opportunity of the primary representative on that. If anybody's interested. You want to switch?
You know what? I would trade DCTC for that. I don't know when it is.
We should have, we listed most of them, but we missed that one. I want to say, Councilmember Ryan, you might remember, is it like Thursday morning?
Thursday afternoons is
Yeah, I, you know, I, you know, I I I would trade that for someone could have VCTC. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I think I think you want to trade that one? I'd be happy with that. And let's Ryan wants to do it.
No, the it's really, these ones that are in the middle of workday are brutal for me.
Right.
Because I get stuff that I can't move all the time, and it looks like the
Randy, it's a good, it's a good opportunity to meet a lot of people in the county. And if this was, I lobbied this group and they they responded with a lot of the backup with business assistance grants in the in the community. And they're also working with the broadband initiative as well.
So good, you don't want to do it anymore. I know. I know how this song and dance works, Bill.
And I, Randy, I'd be happy to be the
I'll bid you a favor for, you know, for bringing you.
I don't mind. I don't if I I don't know what time it is. I mean, I that's the only problem. Like, if it's if it's
Three to four o'clock on Thursday afternoons once a month.
And where is it?
It's been Zoom lately, but it's at the Community Resource Center down in Camarillo, otherwise.
Yeah, there's no way, not at three to four.
It takes a couple hours of your day from between.
I I'd be glad to to take that one.
Hey, Grant.
And then I'm the Chair of Gold Coast Transit this this year.
Yeah, okay, but we have, before that is OBGMA. I would love to do that because it's water is really a passion for me, and that's the reason I ran for mayor, my concern for climate change. And I think it'd be really good to have some people diverse thinking about water and and I would definitely represent more the the ground basin, the watershed approach to water versus moving water. So that's why I'd like to be on it.
Well, I'll speak to Mayor, I I think I think at this point in time that with a lot, you saw the water issue that we had in the closed session. That I truly believe that Ryan and Bill and I'd probably throw myself under the bus as third. But we've been dealing with this issue for almost six years, five, six years easy. And Ryan, before that, with the Golden State issue. Ryan can't do anything with it because of the fact he's representing other people. I would, I think at this point in time, I'd like to nominate Bill and let you be the alternate. You can, as the alternate, you still attend the meetings if you want. And I would think getting a little of this under your belt and then taking it over next year, that's how that's how I would look at it. But I think there's some critical decision making and and Bill's been a Bill's been a part of this this group that has been understanding and looking at these issues for quite a few years. And I think at this point in time that I that I would nominate him and again nominate you as the alternate. With not without 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 trying to offend you. So
No offense.
I'll make this comment. Can we get Golden State Water Company off of here, James? How old is this freaking thing? They do not have a seat on that board anymore. Thank you. I mean, do you have to show the poster behind?
It's been about three years there, James.
Yeah, I mean, James, this is as bad as the orientation book I got that said, council members like to eat at Norris Bistro.
It's a Belarus, it's a it's a special
You know, you might not have offended Betsy, but this offended me.
Trying to remind you of the good times.
You know. Anyway, I will say this, and and I will second what Randy's saying, and I and I will second Bill's nomination, you know. The one thing that's coming up on OBGMA is there is the Sustainable Water Plan, which is highly technical. But, you know, and there's there is no OBGMA doesn't move any water around. They are just, they just deal with one basin and what comes out of it. I know that that issue, in all fairness, Bill was involved in when the groundwater management plan was originally written, and he objected to it, went to OBGMA and said he thought it was insufficient. Bill was a soldier making that Bill was a soldier making that argument a while back, and State Water Resource Control Board ended up agreeing with him, and this year, calendar year, they will be completing their groundwater sustainability plan that Russ Baggerly and some others tried to avoid, and I actually was the alternate when we got the letter from State Water that showed how really poor the alternative plan was. I just, you know, I, I would do this if I could, but I know that, that one particular issue, I, I mean, Bill was right. I mean, I didn't, and I didn't necessarily agree with Bill when he, when he brought that to OBGMA, I thought, no, let him save the money, but I, you were right, and I look back and I, I was wrong, you were correct, I can't.
But we all knew that that signal plan was.
I'd say that you deserve it, Bill, in a way, because that was a pretty, that was a big move, so. That's, that's my take, and this one's in Ojai, which should be a lot easier for me, I would like this one, but no, I can't do it.
Susan? If, Matt, if I wanted to make an alternative motion, how does that work? Can I do that now, or do I have to wait, or, because I, I, for many reasons, think it's appropriate for Mayor Sticks to be our representative on the OBGMA, and, and Bill, Bill could be the alternate, that's my thinking.
Well, if we have a nomination in the second, don't we vote on it, and then if it doesn't?
Nomination.
That would be our typical practice, take the vote on the first nomination, if it fails, then council could consider the second nomination.
Okay.
Well, the first nomination was Betsy, and obviously, Susan, you're a second, so do we want to just do a, how do we want to vote on this, Matt? How do you?
That's fair, you're right, Randy.
Yes, yeah, that's correct, she nominated herself.
And did that get a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
So then, yeah, would be in order to, to take the vote on the first one, then vote on the second. The first being the nomination of the mayor, and I guess Bill's alternate.
Okay, can we have a vote, Gail, please?
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wyrick?
No.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Okay, all right, well, so then, do we vote on Bill, that motion?
And, 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 and the mayor is alternate, I think is the second.
Okay. All right, so we have a second for that, right? So, Gail, you want to go ahead and do the roll call?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes, now, yes.
Councilmember Francina?
It has to be yes, no point, yeah. I, I do have a, a request, my, my yes is with the hopeful understanding that Mayor Sticks gets this one-year position next year, that's, you know, I think that would be.
It'll come up.
Yeah.
And I, I also want to just make a comment, and I pledge very, and I've already spoken to Mayor Sticks about this, I, I will operate in partnership with her very closely.
Okay, great, thank you, Bill.
Very good.
It told me that last year, Betsy, don't listen to him.
But Betsy, now.
Now, can I ask a question? Betsy can attend the meetings, correct, and she can speak as a member of the public, correct?
Yeah, it's awkward.
OBGMA.
Before meetings, yeah.
I, I've spent so long, my first year in 2016, 2017, I remember I went to almost every meeting, it's just a vague memory now, but I remember, yeah.
Okay, well, moving.
Meeting, I mean, every water meeting.
Next, we have Gold Coast Transit District, Randy, your.
Yeah, I'm chairing it this year, so I would enjoy being the chair.
Excellent.
You should be.
Okay, and Ryan, you're the alternate, still?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay, then the Ventura County Council of Governments, Ryan?
Yeah, this is, it's actually more than four times per year also. It is incredibly difficult for me to get down all the way to Camarillo at five o'clock on these Thursdays. I've been late, I don't know how many meetings, and missed a couple. Randy, by the way, I appreciate you backing me up on it, hasn't been as bad with COVID and on Zoom, but it is really hard for me to carve out that much time in my day, so I, if anybody else wants to do it, that would be great. It is a, it's kind of a neat board because there's one rep from every single city, so everybody's represented and one from the county. But when it's at five o'clock, I end up having to leave at 3:45, and it's, it's, takes about an hour plus to get down there with traffic on a normal day.
Actually, actually, if I could comment on that, Betsy, it's actually a good, it's, it's a, it's a good meeting for the mayor or for someone new to council, because.
Yeah, I would, I would encourage you to think about doing that, Betsy.
I, I would too.
It's arguably the best, yeah, I mean, I, I, the sheriff spoke, the emergency services spoke, we had great, I mean, you know, we were talking about Hamp up here, Hamp shows up there, I mean, they, they really do work well. It's a great networking group too, with all the different cities, I mean, I really, I have no, if, it's just the timing, otherwise I would be happy to do it again, but it was.
I, I, yeah, Betsy, I really think you ought to consider it.
Uh, okay, yeah, I'm happy to do it.
Year isn't bad, one supporter, yeah.
And then I'll still be, Betsy, I'll still be your backup, I'll still be, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, Betsy, by the way, there's a meeting tomorrow, five o'clock. Just kidding, it's Thursday, I'll send you the Zoom link.
Today's my birthday, okay, so you have to be nice.
You don't, you do not, hey, I, VCOG, if you work on stop me infrequently at best, I did meetings I went to, but it is, I don't think anybody gets upset if you don't shut down there, but you'll get to meet, what's our good friend's name who runs that? Randy, what's his?
Yeah, you know, it's funny, he said that, I can see his face.
Riley, Hugh, Hugh is great, you'll get, Hugh, Hugh, I think founded the county, so.
All right, we'll look forward to that. Okay, Ventura County Transportation Commission, it's currently, Randy, do you want to do that?
I think he was, we were, we kind of swapped out.
It's fine with me, if Bill's doing it, let, I, again, it's a good commission, and it only meets once a month, not twice a month.
Oh. I used to be on that, I, I need to think about it, maybe by, in about five minutes, I'll think about it, I'll, I'll let you know.
I'd be happy to do it, but I certainly willing to give way to somebody else that wants to. Just from point of history, both my father and my sister have been involved in the, for years, on the Advisory Commission associated with VCTC, and my father actually was the, years ago, was the main driver behind getting that, the, the light at Villanova, so people could cross the highway safely over to the neighborhood, so kind of a history there.
There's a light at Villanova?
Yeah, where the, where the Rite Aid is.
Oh, that Villanova, I was thinking Villanova School, because we've been trying to get a light.
The other end of Villanova, remember how hard it was for people to get to walk across?
Yes, I was hoping you knew something that I didn't know, because I know people have tried to get a light, so the students can get to the bike trail.
My father got involved with that probably ten, fifteen years ago to push that.
If you're willing to do it, it would be wonderful, if you ever peter out and there's nobody else, I would go, but I, I would, I'm pretty overextended right now.
Why don't, why don't we have you as alternate, Susan?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, still Bill?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like at least one more term on that, there's, I'm Chair of the Facilities Committee, there's some pretty critical issues coming up.
Okay, and then Randy, you're the alternate?
Mm-hmm, yeah, but Bill doesn't, Bill's only missed one meeting.
But that was, that was an experience for Randy on the coming.
Oh, yeah, they talked highly of Bill. The first question was, are you anything like him?
Are you another Ojai person, that was the first, yep, yep.
Okay, the Ojai Valley Sanitary District, it's Bill right now, the liaison.
Now, Bill, if you don't want to do that, I can, I, I, no, I'm on one of these that's not on here, I'm the Chair of PCD, so it's not even on this list, but.
I would love you to do that.
If you want me to do it, I can do it.
Please, please. Please.
Sounds a little too anxious, maybe I shouldn't take that.
No, please, Ryan, please.
Ryan, take it.
Very dangerous parking lot, though, I don't know.
You can do it, um, okay.
Yeah, you're not going to pull a Russ, you're not going to pull a Russ.
No, hey, if it's in Ojai at six o'clock on a Monday, that makes my life a lot easier, I can handle that.
Thank you, Ryan, thank you.
Okay, and then Randy, you're the alternate for that, still?
Yeah, yeah, again, these guys don't miss meetings, so that's no problem.
Okay, next is the Ojai Valley Green Coalition.
I'd like to continue and have you be the alternate.
That'd be lovely, thank you.
I, I just have one question, are they, I, I know they're in existence, but we've stopped funding. We've kind of.
We did it, well, the council chose to fund this year, and, well, and I should say, they, they did not request funding this year. This year was going to be the, kind of the regroup and rebuild year.
They relaunched.
Yeah. Yeah, they have a board, they're, they're functioning, they have meetings, sometimes twice a month, Zoom meetings, yeah.
Without, without throwing a massive, well, I, I, sorry, I'm assuming we're done with the rest, but maybe we're not.
You know, the school district?
I would really strongly recommend that you consider doing that instead of Randy.
He ran, want to swap the Ventura County Council of Governments for the school liaison, that might make better sense.
VCOG for the school?
Yes, I'll take the school, I'll be the liaison for the school.
You know, I'm going to tell you something, you know, this is my take on the school, it was interesting, I went to, you know, I, I'll be honest with you, I've been pretty negligent with that group, and the reason why is you go into a meeting and they're ten hours long, the, the newspaper gets the information out faster than I can at a council meeting. I don't even know if we need a liaison to the school board, to be honest with you. Well, I think we put it in years ago because we were trying to create something with them, but I don't know how successful that's been.
Well, and every time I've seen you there, it's always, I've always seen Bill standing right next to you anyway.
Well, I, I would, I mean, especially if you would be willing to swap that and take the other one, the.
I'm going to go to, so I'm going to go to Camarillo every Thursday?
Because I would love to work on building that relationship up, and.
I, I think that, I think you could be very well positioned to do that, there.
I don't have a problem with that, you can take, you can have both.
Oh, come on.
Well, you know what, the only one who's not traveling right now is Susan.
Well, that's because I, I go to Camarillo. Can I go, I mean, aren't, aren't all these meetings by Zoom, what are you talking about?
Well, they won't be for the whole year.
Yeah.
And I will say, I don't, I have nothing bad to say about VCOG, Betsy, I don't mean to scare you away, it's just really hard, it's just, it's a bad traffic time, I mean, if you need, you, well, it's on Zoom, I can, I can handle that.
Okay, so I'll make a concession, I'll do VCOG, if I can be the, if I can be the additional appointee to the Budget Committee, because I would really enjoy to be, being a part of that.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, mine's fine with me too.
Great, thanks, Randy.
I, I really, I'm looking forward to, you know, maybe trying some, you know, some productive, creative approaches with the school district. I, I appreciate your willingness to do that.
I'm looking forward, thank you.
I would think personally on the Budget Committee, I would think that that alternate should always be an alt, should always be an alternate through the council, only because it just provides us more knowledge and more internal workings of how the city operates. Where, you, you'll see, Betsy, when we, when you get your first budget.
Randy, you can handle the, you and Betsy can handle the budget this year, this.
I'm just trying to say, there's just so much information that you need to learn and that you need to adapt to, and I would just think that it would behoove all of us as council members to, if we can.
I think it's great.
In that, you know, along with the mayor.
On that one, just, just to remind everybody, that one isn't even an alternate, it's an additional appointee, so.
Right, so, right, we're both there.
All right, can I add one thing?
Yeah.
Should we create a liaison position to the Chamber of Commerce?
Good idea.
Great idea.
We give them money, I don't know whether when this was listed, when Golden State was around and the dates were wrong, and.
How about you, Ryan, how about you?
Clary garbage out of the, you got to get the.
Yeah, you're always visiting with them.
How about you do that, Ryan?
Oh, Ryan.
If we want to, I just, if we're willing to do it, I can, I know, I know they meet in town, and, you know, it's not far away.
Heck, it's a great idea, I think you're right, Ryan, why don't you do it?
That's good.
Ryan, Ryan.
They used to meet in my office, which was much more, which was much easier, all right, I don't mind doing it, that's.
Okay.
That is a great idea.
Yeah, really good idea.
And I, I do think, Ryan, that the APCD should be on this list, even though it was selected by the, by the selection committee, so we'll add that to this list as well, for, for the future, so, as just a.
Based on the age of this, you can put my dad as the liaison.
Man, I think it was in this discussion that I wanted to just talk about something, and I don't want to offend anybody, but the Complete Streets Group, I think, you know, Susan, Susan's been on it as a citizen, and has remained on it as a council member. And my sense is that I, what I would like to see is the council, is the council member that is the liaison to planning, be the individual now that goes to Complete Streets. I just, I just think that we need more involvement from all of us council people in some of the direction that's, that's not necessarily the direction, but with the information that's being gathered and then passed on, and that's just my suggestion, I, I'm I'm asking for it, if, if the group says no, that's fine too, but I think it's just important that I, I've seen so many conversations where I see the Public Works Director leaning on Susan for support or for answers or for this, and, and to me, the Public Works Director should be working for all five of us. And I just think that if the Public Works Director knew that that was going to be a rotational council person attending those meetings, that it would benefit the community as well as benefit the council.
Yeah, Susan?
Randy, just to be clear what you're asking, are you saying that the quarterly council member that goes to Planning Commission also for that quarter goes to Complete Streets?
Yeah.
Right, and if we go that route, there's nothing to stop me from also going, as long as there's no other council member present, correct?
And, and just to add to that, because the Complete Streets Committee is a Brown Act body and does have an agenda and does have its meetings posted publicly, any member of council, any number of members of council can attend.
I think it's good if a council member attends a Complete Streeting, another councilman can still attend.
I'll come with you.
Is it just the person that has planning goes that they also have the Complete Street commitment?
But what if they're not interested, or, or they can't make three o'clock, how's that work?
Well, that could be a problem, and maybe that council person brings it back to council and says three o'clock meetings aren't appropriate for the public. That's what I'm trying to say, is there's a lot to be learned, a lot to be said about this, about this group, and, and how it functions, and I think having a different set or another set of eyes is going to be beneficial.
I, I think we came upon that three o'clock, because that's where the room was available, and, you know, that, I don't think there was any, there's been some insinuation that we meet there at three o'clock to keep the public out, and that's completely false, so let me put that to rest. I'm, the Chair is Kathy Nolan, and she has Planning Commission afterwards at six, and so it's often really hard for her, you know, to go from one meeting, and, and Steve Quillis is on that committee, he's on the Planning Commission. It's a wide variety of, of people, contrary to certain rumors going around town, but I'm perfectly fine with your suggestion, Randy. So I don't know if, if, if the three o'clock is a, a problem, I think they're going to have, it's not fair, I mean, it's not, I, I did not come up with that three o'clock time, I don't know the history on it.
Well, so I'm trying to say is.
I don't know what's involved in changing the time, so, you know.
And I'm not suggesting that, I'm just suggesting that a council person be a liaison, an actual council person, both as a council person rep, and that brings back to the council what was discussed and which way it's heading, and what are the, you know, things of that nature, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Mayor Sticks?
Well, I'll note that the structure of the Complete Streets Committee is not on tonight's agenda, appointing a liaison is on tonight's agenda.
Well, I'll note that the structure of the Complete Streets Committee is not on tonight's agenda, appointing a liaison is on tonight's agenda. And so that action, as far as I've heard, has been completed. It might be the case that if there was support from members of council, a discussion could be had of the structure of the Complete Streets Committee as a separately agendized item to be brought up in future agenda items.
Mayor, Mayor Stig?
Yes, Bill, thanks, Matt.
Wouldn't one way be to finesse this, just, we already have a liaison rotation for the commissions? And just say that, you know, it's a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, doesn't prevent anybody from attending? And, and just, it's a, it's understood that when you rotate in this liaison to Public Planning Commission, you're also, you know, that includes a subcommittee.
Right.
Yeah. Why don't we just do it that way?
That's what he said, yeah.
Well, it doesn't require any special change, just.
No, I'm just saying, that's all I wanted to bring it up, I didn't know when to bring it up.
Yeah, so we just have an understanding that it's a, the Planning Commission liaison, when you're in that calendar quarter, that includes the subcommittees of the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Perfect.
Sounds good. All right, so we, we move on, we don't vote in this, we just keep going?
I actually would recommend that. One vote to confirm all the appointments.
Okay.
Obviously, we have the divided one, one vote to confirm everything.
Okay, Gil, could we have a vote on this, please?
Do we need a motion?
Oh, motion?
The motion is as we described, who would be liaisons.
Right. Second.
Second, let's get this over with.
Thank you, thank you, we're ready. Who's, who made the motion?
I heard. Councilmember Blatts and the second by the mayor.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wyrich?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, great, done. All right, moving on to council protocols. James, take it over, please.
Yeah, similarly, since this is the first meeting of the year, we talked recently at a council meeting about revisiting some of our protocols on, at this first meeting of the year. So this item is, allows for council to discuss, review and discuss potential modifications to city council protocols. We highlighted the issues that have been brought up recently that we may want to provide further direction on, some of the things that are included in that list are the discussion recently of whether to consider adopting Rosenberg's Rules of Orders, which are a simplified set of, of rules as compared to the Roberts Rules of Orders. I think the Roberts Rules are over six hundred pages, I think, if I remember correctly, so, so the, that was just brought up as a potential simplification. We also talked about discussing potential changes to the, the time and or length of regular meetings. So that is also called out as something that, that council may wish to discuss tonight. And then we also talked about changing the, or modifying the language regarding the process to place an item on a future agenda. And lastly, oh, the last one is, is mostly just a note that we did revise the appointment process recently for the commissions. So we're, we just noted that we'll update the language in the protocols to match what was recently adopted, so that, that's one change we'll make, unless there's direction otherwise tonight, but, but so with that, you know, the protocols are included with the agenda this meeting, so council could choose to discuss about, discuss those issues or any other issues related to the protocols.
I just wanna start with this, James, do you give the, did you give these to Betsy when she became mayor?
Yeah, yeah, we walked through them.
Yeah, I just wondered, because this is the first time I've ever seen them, so.
Ask a question. If we, if the council decided to adopt the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, does that then automatically apply to the commissions and to, if, if, how, how does that work? It can, because it seems like we should all be guided by the same rules.
It would carry through if the council were to adopt Rosenberg's by many of the relevant sections of the code, that would carry through to all the bodies under the city. And it's worth noting that most of the other bodies aren't quite as formal as the council.
Thank you.
I, I'll go ahead and move that we direct the city attorney to draft a text amendment to adopt Rosenberg's.
I second.
And anything else, though, under this, before we vote on that, just in terms of protocol?
Well, I was just trying to keep it simple.
Matt, is the, I've never seen Rosenberg's rules, so is it just simplicity? Is that the main advantage?
Yeah, the Rosenberg's, I think, was included, at least I hope it was included in the packet.
I didn't see some of them, I mean, I saw the one page, but I, I figured this wasn't all of it.
Oh.
Is the ten-page attachment C is the.
Oh, the whole thing, yeah, I looked at the differences, but I guess, my main question is, is the advantage conciseness and simplicity, or is there other benefits?
Yeah, there's two main advantages to Rosenberg's. One is its simplicity, it's the same ten-page rulebook. Those ten pages, those ten pages of rules are essentially the same as under Roberts. The difference is with Roberts, you have another five hundred and fifty pages of extra rules that are often weaponized by those with time and energy. And, and sometimes to the detriment of those who are focusing on other priorities and not reading five hundred pages of rules written for the British Parliament. The second piece is that Rosenberg's was written with modern public government in mind, distinct from Roberts, which has a whole lot of provisions about the kinds of secret voting or side, large, by majority committees that we can't operate under the Brown Act restrictions. That's why a number of cities have switched to Rosenberg's, and as you'll, as you'll all recall, we operate even now under a modified version of Roberts, because Roberts is the Brown Act controls, the various pieces of state law control above, and I'll add that if there is, this one, consensus would be fine for direction for me to draft an ordinance, we wouldn't need a formal vote.
Okay, great, why don't we just dispense with this one and move on then?
Right, beautiful, thank you.
I will do so, thank you.
Great.
So what, whoa, 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 what did we just agree on?
Draft a text amendment for Rosenberg's at a future meeting.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm old school, there's nothing wrong with this, if it ain't broken, why are we fixing it, but.
It was written in eighteen seventy-six.
The British.
Really old.
No, this sounds much better.
We're fighting over the Constitution right now, the United States, and what was it written?
Eighty-three.
So.
What Matt said at the very beginning, they're just much more user-friendly, which would be much better for everyone.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem, I don't think it's gonna change much, I think the biggest one that I've ever run up against is the motion to end debate. I think I've, that's been used against me a couple times, and it wasn't a good feeling.
Well, let's just move on.
This is just, this isn't to adopt it, Randy, this is just to bring it up for the agenda, the text amendment, this is not to adopt it.
We're good, what else?
I will write the ordinance, thank you.
All right, thanks, Matt.
It's a time.
The time. I know, and it's an issue for you, clearly, so.
Who?
Ryan?
I'm sorry, my computer froze for a second, I didn't know what you were saying.
Well, time, we're talking about the time to start the meeting.
Yeah, it's harder for me, the, the, you know, the issue that has come up before, and I've been around for years with my dad doing this sort of stuff, was they used to have special meetings after the regular meetings, and it was a mess. And for, as, as, as special counsel of the city, I came in and I've never had such a group of people who had no interest in listening to what we had to say. So I don't know how we deal with the frequency of special meetings. If we're gonna, if we start meetings at six or six-thirty, if we're gonna have them at five, five-thirty, it's, it's pretty early for us. The other problem is that it ran in, you know, we have the ten o'clock rule.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty, whatever it is, then we got another hour before we get to the rule. But I don't mind, if we wanna do it sooner, that's fine, but if we start packing special meetings on in front of it, it's gonna be tough.
Okay, Suzha, yeah.
Are you saying that you cannot make it at five o'clock? Is that what you're saying, Ryan?
No, I'm saying it's hard to make it at five o'clock, and at five o'clock, that means I've spent all day working until four fifty-nine, and then I'm in a meeting until however long it takes, with no, there's no time in between. Sometimes I can barely get back by five, it doesn't happen that often, but it does. I can usually work around that somewhat, you know, court, you know, in the, in the afternoon evenings, court usually isn't going until that late, if there is something going on, we're usually done by four, four-thirty, can get back. But, you know, pinning it right at the end of the workday has historically been a bad move. The reason it's been moved to seven, and it floated between six, six-thirty and seven, with time change and other issues, was every time city moves it up, people complain, and every time we move it back, people seem to like it more, but we end up at a lot, much longer meeting.
But we can, we can end, oh, questions? We can end the meetings, we can change the time certain as well, if we start earlier?
Yes.
Randy?
Mayor, these, you know, I, you know, I, I know I'm the one who initiated holding these special meetings early, because we used to do our council sessions and then ten-thirty, eleven, and then be then go into another hour meeting and not get out of city hall.
The next day.
Why don't we start doing these before the meeting? Because they're closed, and the whole idea behind, I believe, the seven o'clock meeting was so that we had better public involvement and openness, so. I don't have, I don't have a problem going to six-thirty or six, Ryan, and then moving the, those other meetings to the back end, I, it doesn't.
Well, I, I will say this, I mean, my experience has been, don't hold special meetings at the end of a council meeting, because you can't get through a council meeting any faster than you can get through it, but those special meetings become really depleted. I mean, I had really complicated water stuff to talk about, and it did not go very well in a couple of those meetings, and that's an outsider kind of saying it, and I'm getting a lot of nods up and down, I think it's probably correct. I would say that if we wanna move it a little earlier, let's do it, but if, I, I would just assume, if we're gonna have an hour-long special meeting, I don't care whether we do it the day of the meeting or not, we can do it on Wednesdays, or, I mean, I know it may not be easy for staff, but I, you know, we don't have to have a six-hour-long meeting, because we have five hours of council and an hour of special meetings. Well, I don't know what.
Well, I, I don't disagree, in fact, it was interesting, I was talking to James about this, that, you know, we have a lot of themes on our agenda, and then, and then as we narrow down to the end of the night, it's all of a sudden, it's, well, we can't get to item number six or item seven. And I was saying to James that because, because that agendized item has already been written, why don't we carry that over into a third meeting to be held at the end of the, at the end of the month? And it's only for agendized items that we did not deal with. And then that way, we're still staying with, let's say we had five items that we discussed and we didn't get to two. Well, the way it, the package usually put together, the two at the back are normally the things that require the less amount of action. So moving them to a later date doesn't necessarily hurt them, and it doesn't create more staff time to write more reports. We could probably look at special meetings that way, too, is look at our calendar and say, you know, you know, we project special meetings, we know when they're coming up, and most of them are time-sensitive. So we could do the same thing if we wanted to, I, I'm with, well, I think we're all here and we're all in agreement that we're here to serve the people, and, and I, you know, since we met every week, wouldn't bother me at all, so. More and having them earlier doesn't bother me, it's all about educating the public and giving them an opportunity to participate.
I agree with you, Randy, it's less about when it starts than it is about how long the meeting is and how solid everybody is when we have to make decisions. Because having a special meeting where you're making the biggest decisions usually are in a lot of those closed sessions. Doing that at eleven-thirty after everybody's exhausted and beaten up by the public is just not conducive to a group making great decisions. But, I mean, I think the easy answer would be, well, let's move it based on special meetings, but I know then there's some concern with the public not knowing, now we could I mean, you know, if we don't have a special meeting, we can start the meeting sooner, but keep our public comment time at exactly the same time. I don't know, I don't know, I don't have a problem with the way it is either, I mean, the reality is, I don't make appointments on Wednesday morning, and I try not to go to court on Wednesday morning, because I know we're gonna be late, so.
So what's the consensus group? Betsy, what's your thoughts?
Well, I think, I think earlier is better, I think everyone's just fresher earlier in the evening, and and looking at, thank you, James, for that list of when all the other meetings start, and we're, we're the latest, so I think that's something to look at, and from what I've heard from the public, people would like it earlier, they just, Ohio goes to bed early.
We do.
So, and, and I think, and I agree, you know, the long meetings, I don't just, you know, hour three or four, it's, it's hard to stay productive. I think as, as for human beings to really be attentive to that, for that length of time, so what do y'all think about starting at six?
I, I like six, but I'm, I'm not, I'm totally flexible, but, you know, I don't like the idea of Ryan you know, and the five o'clock, because I don't like the idea of doing the close, like the idea of close session at five, meeting at six, and then ending and making the time certain an hour sooner. So that's the same, you know, that's what I personally would like, but I don't know how well that works for the rest of you in the public, so I will just simply acquiesce what the majority wants.
I'm, I'm flexible, too, I'm good with six, maybe as a start time, either closed or non-closed session. Either way, if there's not a closed session, we start the regular meeting at six, I'm fine with that. If we have a closed session, we start that at six.
No, 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 we can't do that, then the public would not know when.
Well, I, I, I think it's a problem for people to, you know, well, okay, I'm just making a suggestion. The other alternative is we have closed sessions on other days than the regular meetings, if we start at six.
What do you think about that, James?
Yeah, and I'm, I don't know if five-thirty is too early for everybody for closed session, because what, you know, we could just kind of know as an internal policy that we need to be very strict with our closed session time, and you know, closed session can be five-thirty to six, and that's it.
What about just on another day at six?
I, I think I have an, I have a solution, I would say this, and this is what would, and, and this is a little self-serving too, but I would say, instead of six, why not six-thirty, then if we have a half-hour closed session, we still have time to do it on the meeting night. It's gonna be over a half-hour closed session, because most of the time it's a half-hour, we just have, we got a lot of double issues and things like that. It's gonna be over that, then we can either decide on the fly to start at five-thirty, or we move it to another night, and then we could also, at any time, if we have a closed session here and a closed session there we need to do, plus a couple agenda items we missed during the month, we can plug them in at the back of the month or in between, as Randy suggested. And then we're, they're more manageable, I mean, I just don't think we're, it's conducive to great decisions, you know, it's, it's three hours, what did the study say, is three hours sitting on your rear end in a room, after that, you're not thinking straight pretty much anymore, I use it on other sides.
Stand up, right?
Yeah, right, exactly, to walk around the block or whatever.
Yeah, I think, I, I was thinking the same thing, though, about the closed session, you know, half an hour typically works, and, and if we need to call a special meeting, that's fine, you know, or, or, or we make it work, so I think that, that, that plan could work.
You know, the other thing, too, is we, we noticed the, the, the last meeting for the last Tuesday of the month, and if we need it, we need it, if we don't, we don't. So again, that's if we get through our agenda packet, we do, if we don't, we know that we're gonna move it to that meeting date. So I, I, I see the win there, too, I don't know what you guys think.
I know, Betsy, you had said six o'clock, is six-thirty an okay compromise to not be? Because I agree with you, a little earlier certainly doesn't hurt, I mean, right now would be nine-thirty, and that would, you know, I think that would make a difference, about ten o'clock is, is about, you know, where, where things probably aren't as great.
I'm good with that.
Okay, great.
Six-thirty to ten with typically half an hour closed sessions.
Sounds good. A motion on that?
Here, too, we need to amend the municipal code to do that, so it would be consensus to direct me to prepare that document.
I concur with that consensus. I concur with that consensus.
I'll second that.
And then, um, the last part of this. The last part is, is, is about how to get things on the agenda?
Yeah. I, I kind of, Mayor, I, I asked James to put this on. I, I kind of feel like, you know, I've done it, too, with other council people. You know, we've been approached by a group of people, and, and there's an emergency on their mind, and all of a sudden it has to be our emergency. And so then two of us write in, and, or one writes in, the other one second sit, and the next thing you know, we've thrown another thing on the agenda. And I just think it's just poor agenda management. And, um, I think that we should be able to sit down at the end of every meeting and set the agenda for the next meeting. And, um, if someone wants to bring something to the council, they bring it to the council, and they vet it there publicly. And the majority of the council says, yes, put it on the next agenda. But I think we get caught up in so many of these little, you know, special interest group things that, oh, I gotta help that person, I gotta help that person, like, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how the Teramina theosophical community, I probably mispronounced that, but I don't know how that got on the agenda, because I bet he's either asleep at the wheel, or two people put it on the agenda, two council people put it on the agenda. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm saying that I think it should be brought up publicly and let, let it be agendized by three council people in a meeting. That's what I'd like to see. And, um, that also goes with the mayor. You know, right now, we have the mayor can throw anything that he or she wants on the agenda. And I think that that should be, should that, that individual should be held to the same standard as the rest of us. And if they need to put something on, they bring it to council, and we, we discuss it and agendize it. So, again, it's an idea.
I'm ready to make a motion. Is it too soon?
Okay, I have a, I have a question for, and I know, but I know Bill did first, so in all fairness, Bill, I don't want to.
I, uh, Mayor Six, may I just ask a question of Councilmember Haney? So, uh, Randy, are you, are you recommending bullet one, two, or three? Are, are some modification?
Number three.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Matt, I have a question. How does other councils handle this? I, you know, I don't know what the, how do you, what, what, what's your awareness of how other councils deal with getting it on the agenda?
It varies fairly heavily. Uh, the cities that I work with all fall into one of the three bullets that's listed. So just to recap, option one is the present rule, the mayor or any two members of council at any time. Option two, the mayor or any two members of council, but, but only at future agenda items during a regular meeting. Option three is three members of council at future agenda items during a regular meeting. As to the numbers of the cities I work with, most of the cities have bullet two or three. They require it to be future agenda items at a meeting, so it's, it takes at least two meetings to get something, yeah, accomplished, if, if the goal is to do it with council action. So it's first meeting, raise the idea from one member of council, and then a second, and then it's on, or in other cities, second and a third, then it's on. And then it comes to the next meeting to be, to be looked at in full. The one caution I would note is, um, with bullet three, the, the piece that makes it legal is that the discussion is merely, yes, put it on the agenda. It can't be a debate, it can't be a, uh, well, I want it on the agenda, but only if it's this way. No, it has to just be, Councilmember Smith requests it, and Jones, and, um, I'm out of names, Jones and Bob, say, yes, put it on the agenda. Uh, it can't be a debate back and forth. And, and I'm happy to police that as needed. Depending on the, on the selected choice.
So what it, what it really avoids, if, if I can paraphrase, is you don't end up with some surprise element like you just described, Randy, on the, on the agenda. You know it, it's, you know it can only come because you had to hear about it, and there had to be two yes votes in a public forum at the end of a meeting to do it before. Now, what if there's something, because obviously we don't meet all the time, and it's not an emergency, but something comes up, and we, in between meetings, feel like it's not appropriate to wait three or four weeks from one meeting to the next. Well, is there a separate process for that, or do you have to go to the mayor to unilaterally do it, or, or, I mean, you know, or, Matt, is there some exception for that?
In other words, what's the escape valve? And the way that the other cities I work with have this escape valve is two ways. One, they can go to the city, any member, set a council members can go to the city manager. And if the city manager concurs that the item requires resolution faster, then he, he or she could put it on the next agenda. And most of the cities delegate to the manager the power to put the routine items on the agenda. And the manager generally has a good sense of, is this something that two support and three may not, or two and five may not? Or is this, oh, there's a grant money, there's a grant application, we gotta apply tomorrow, let's get some, bring some outside revenue into the city. Uh, and the council tends to trust the manager, recognize that sometimes that does put the manager in a tough spot if two members of council are convinced that something is absolutely critical, and the manager is not. And that can create, uh, conflict. And the escape valve for that is that under the Brown Act straight, any, the mayor or a majority of council can call a special meeting and set the agenda for a special meeting. So if there was something like that, where the manager simply said, I don't, I don't agree, then the mayor or three members of council can call a special meeting, and in so doing, define the agenda.
Okay, so the, so the alternative to all this is three council members set a meeting whenever they want, set their own agenda whenever they want, as a special meeting with appropriate notice?
Correct.
Yeah, you go there. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Matt? Mayor, um, I have a question, and then I want to, uh, uh, make a motion. Is there a difference in the cities that have an elected mayor versus a rotating mayor?
Yeah, the ones that I work in that have an elected mayor, uh, all allow the elected mayor to put something on the agenda. Yes, all the ones that I work in that have an elected mayor. That's not universal across the state, though. There are other cities that have an elected mayor that still apply the same rule. That does vary.
The ones, but, but that's not unusual, that an elected mayor gets to put on the agenda.
It's not uncommon, no.
It's what?
It's not uncommon for the elected mayor to have the power to put something on the agenda, separate from the rest of council.
Yes.
But it's not, that's also, it's an option for council.
Yeah. Well, I, I have not had any problems with the way that, uh, we've put items on the agenda. I don't think that there have been any frivolous items. Perhaps, uh, there's a way that, um, James could notice us if there's been a request, or that we're not taken by surprise. The Teramina thing is a very legitimate item, and I believe they're speaking, they're waiting to speak. So I hope that we can get to that. Um, there's two people, I think, want to speak on that item. So I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, uh, that we keep the current system that the mayor or any two council members can request an item to be added at any time. You know, with the understanding that we're thoughtful and not, not frivolous. We're elected officials, and we take our job seriously. I don't have a problem with the current system.
I'm gonna second your motion, Sue.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Gail May, we have a vote, please.
Are you awake, Gail?
Yeah.
Sorry, I had my two mouses mixed up there for a moment. Um, Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Councilmember Haney?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, uh, the next will be the workshop.
Madam Mayor, there was a fourth item on the protocols point.
Okay, thank you. Which one?
It was the, um, oh, actually, no, I, I apologize. That was already covered by city manager. It was that the protocols will be updated to reflect the changes and ordinances for the structure of the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, and Historic Preservation Commission, by which each member of council gets an appointment. So that has been.
We don't need to vote to receive and file that, do we?
Yeah, we're down.
Oh, we're just gonna update it. We're just noting that we're cleaning it up as we go.
May I make a suggestion? This hour is late. Um, if, if, if there's people waiting to speak on the Teramina item, that we do that before the, the work, or am I mixed up? Yeah, no. The number seven is Teramina.
Yeah, this is just the workshop. Can we do a, basically, let's have, it'll all clearly be on Zoom, and it'll be about goal setting. Should we talk about it next time? Because of the, it's ten-ten? Anybody?
Let's see how long Teramina takes.
Okay.
I'm all for it. I'm all for it.
Yeah. Okay.
And we've done it before.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be different.
We're overdue for a goal-setting.
Okay, that'd be great. So we can all agree that we want to have one.
Yes, I, I don't, I don't want to hire a facilitator, however, I think we could just do it ourselves.
Well, James has some great ideas for a couple people who would be an option. Do you want to speak to that, James?
Uh, we were gonna see if, uh, there's a couple of local people that had indicated they'd be willing to, to volunteer to do it. So we were, we were gonna see if that was an option.
We don't have any money.
Yeah, yeah. So we could see if there, you know, we, we'll, we could do some research.
I tell you, the expert in this community is Jim Selman.
He was one of the people we were thinking.
Internationally known, he is the best.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if he'd do it for free, but, um, but he, but he's a, he's an expert in that arena.
I, I just don't want to approve spending money right now without knowing.
Yeah, I think that's.
Well, I thought we were gonna move this and bring it back another day. We're not.
Okay.
Well, we could read, with, with that, we could get started.
Consensus is there, so it may make sense to just consider the item covered by consensus.
Yep.
Yeah, and then you could give us via email some suggested time and date.
Or we could have it on a future meeting to approve a specific facilitator and structure.
We could come back with a plan at a future.
Okay. Sounds good. Great.
Okay, Teramina.
And I'll, uh, just briefly, I, I think the, um, the report included a, an attachment with, with some detail on, uh, on specifics, but just high level. Um, so we, we did receive a request from, uh, two council members to, um, consider this. We had received, I, I should back up and say initially, we had received a request from Teramina, Representative Robin Gerber to, uh, to provide information regarding how the, uh, Teram, Teramina theosophical community could potentially dedicate their streets to the city of Ojai. So we have provided them that report that was attached, in response to that request, to just tell them what the typical process is, that it typically requires the community to make certain improvements before it's handed over, um, or provide funding to make those improvements before it's handed over. And so that, that was an ongoing discussion with Teramina, um, early in 2020. We provided that information, uh, my understanding, and I, I got a confirmation from Teramina that they were interested in, in seeing if council would actually, uh, support moving forward on that request. And so, uh, then the item was requested by two council members for, um, for full council, uh, discussion. So the item is brought forward. The, uh, you know, obviously, we talk about something that everybody knows in the staff report, which is that our, our budget is very, um, stretched right now during the financial crisis caused by COVID. So for us, the, one of the big issues that we highlighted was potential costs and just the need for us to work with Teramina to make sure that, um, that the, um, property owners at Teramina are, are covering those costs as it hand, as it would potentially transfer over, and that those are not shifted to our, you know, general fund and general taxpayers. So that's where most of the discussion in the staff report is focused. And, um, but, you know, there's obviously, um, gotta be a discussion at some point of whether council supports doing so.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Sticks?
Yes, Bill.
I just wanted to quickly, the predicate for my agreeing to, um, have this on the agenda is, was that it would be in the form of either a restricted fund or a, uh, maybe even the city sponsor a, uh, a vote on a, see if they, the term in a neighborhood wanted to vote for a, a special district setup under the city sponsorship. So I, 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 I've never contemplated that there would be a general fund support for this, that it would be a, a restricted fund or a special district. So, but there's, there's great economies of scale, uh, for the city to do this kind of thing that really are not something that's accessible to a, a small neighborhood association. But it still could be handled where it's, it's separated from the, from the general fund. So that, that was the predicate for me to ask it to be studied and brought forward. And I know we have some members from the Neighborhood Association here that want to speak to their, their issue.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff, Suzie? It's a question.
Okay, I just wanted to make a similar remark. My understanding is that they're very well organized. They have a hundred thousand dollars, or, you know, I'm sure they'll explain that when we let them into the council chamber, the Zoom, the Zoom chamber. That's all.
Can we let, can we let them in now? Is that, Gail?
So we have John Lambert and Robin Gerber. Um, so you want me to let both of them into the meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay, here they come.
Thank you.
Okay, they shouldn't be appearing. There's Robin. You should be unmuted. Go ahead and speak if you'd like. And John, you should be unmuted now, too.
Well, we really don't have anything to say. We're really here to answer questions, but, uh, quickly, I'll just say that the reason that we are promoting this is that we are the first historic district in Ojai. And so people are invited to come into our neighborhood. And so it seemed to, it seems to make sense that we should, our road should be a public road to go along with that, and be up to the standard that the city would expect. As Bill said, there's economies of scale, and, uh, but we do have a fund. It's ninety to a hundred thousand dollars, my treasurer told me today. And we're very happy to work out whatever the structure is that would make it work. And we're here to answer questions, because it's late.
Bill, and then Randy?
Uh, so, Robin, you and I have talked about this, and, and my understanding is that you are willing to, like, figure out the right structure for this to be funded by the Neighborhood Association, but just the work performed, uh, by the city. Is my understanding that, that you're not looking for general fund support, you're just looking for some help with expertise and economies of scale, more or less.
Exactly.
Thank you.
All right, can you guys clarify that, that conversation, that, that, what are you saying, economy to scale? Are, are, uh, because we do so much paving on an annual basis that we're gonna get it cheaper than what they could as a private entity?
Well, if, could I, you want me to respond to that, or?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the, the, yeah, Randy, you know, it, it has to do with, it's, it's obviously always less expensive to include, uh, something in a, in a larger project when it comes to paving. And then there's also the expertise of having the templates we have for knowing how to bid road projects and how to specify them. You know, that, that soft cost is already sort of built into our, uh, infrastructure. So having the, uh, uh, my understanding is, is what we're looking at here, and other cities have experienced this, is that even though it's funded by the, the Neighborhood Association, just the ability to have it bid as part of a larger package ends up saving a lot of money.
Well, I understand that, but does Robin understand our, our practice right now of how we pave our streets in Ojai? You're lucky you get paved every twenty years.
Now, no, we bid, we bid out every other year.
Do we understand that, that how far behind we are?
And, and we're talking about with Measure C, starting to bid every year.
So what we're doing, so, uh, what, what I'm hearing is we're gonna give a community preferential treatment in the bidding process because they're paying for it themselves? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, they're also paying into the general fund, and then they'd be adding, they'd be paying more than everyone else, yes.
You said they're not paying into the general fund.
No, they already, they already pay taxes into the general fund like everybody else. And then they, they would be paying assessments on top of that for their neighborhood.
So let me get back to my last question. Robin, do you understand how long it takes us to pave a street in Ojai?
I understand what was in Greg Grant's report, which said that this would be done over, I believe, a 10-year period. So.
Once every 10 years. I'm just saying, be careful what you're buying into.
Yeah, well, look, the street is not so deteriorated that, you know, it can't be done in stages. So my understanding was, and John, you know, jumped in, that it would be done in stages. And yes, we understand.
I'm just saying, I have a street right around the corner from me, Drown Avenue. That would take probably two years budget to fix that street. So that's my fear is you're you is one is taking on more real estate, taking on more asphalt when we already struggle to maintain what we have. Two, giving you the impression that, yeah, we're going to take care of you because, quote, you're a special district and you're contributing a little more, so therefore we'll put you at the top of the heap on an annual basis. So how do I tell my neighbor who wants their street paved and their sidewalks properly done? And how do I say, well, you got to wait for Teramina now because they're, quote, a special district? I mean, I just, that's my concern here, guys.
I don't know why they have to wait.
I'm just, I'm just wondering how I tell my neighbor someone just got ahead in the line.
They're not, they're not ahead of the line.
I have no recollection at all of being ahead of any line. We are a special district because the city accepted the premise that this is a very historic little piece of property. That's the only thing that makes it special.
The houses are historic.
Sorry?
The houses were historic. Am I correct in that discussion?
No, no, no. The community itself and the way it looks, the houses, the entire intent of this place is what made it historic.
The whole area.
Right, the roads are an integral part of it, of course, because that's how one gets in and out. But no one ever said that we would be looking to be put ahead of anyone else in a line. That was not an intention that I understood in any way. We, at this point in time, those of us who live in this community, contribute to the general fund of the city through our taxes. We also, within the community, have a an assessment that goes towards maintaining the road. That is something that we've always struggled with. And we're looking for a way to to piggyback on what the city does on a very regular basis, which is the maintenance of the roads throughout the entire city. That's all we were looking for. Economies of scale, certainly. If we go to paving companies and ask, what does it take to do, you know, a two-inch slurry coat on Teramina Lane and Arundel Road, we'll get one price. If you do the same thing nested into La Paz and Valerio and Hermosa, you're going to get a very different price. And that's where we were, we were coming from. We're not looking for a preferential treatment, Randy, in any way.
James, what other city, what other roads in the city have been adopted like this? Are there other situations that are similar down?
Through a community facilities district, we don't, we don't have any existing community facilities districts. And, you know, it's not unusual. Other cities do have them. I worked in Oxnard and they had 56 of them when I left. But this would be the first of its kind in Ojai.
Would the 21, is the number 21,000 annually, is that what I boiled down?
Once, once they're brought up to the standard for acceptance, we estimate it would be about $21,000 a year annual.
Does that include the staff time and things like that? Because I know it says in the fiscal impact, it talks about how much staff time would be required, but it doesn't really say that it'd be, it's unclear whether that'd be compensated out of that 21,000 or not.
Yeah, that 21,000 was maintenance costs specifically, I believe. And and there is, we don't expect to add. I think the point about the economies of scale is the biggest thing is for the engineer to add this street to the list is not a lot of work. It doesn't take much effort versus, you know, Teramina would have to hire its own engineer and would have to to do all of that. So it's not a whole lot of staff work. It would be adding it on and bidding it out, you know, and that's where that $21,000 is coming from. It's maintenance costs.
I just wanted, if I may, just to add one slight clarification. The road, we are the Teramina Theosophical Community as a historic district. The roads are not owned by anything Teramina Theosophical at all. It's owned by a corporation, the Green Circle Service Corporation. So that's the current owners of the road. That's the entity that you are talking with.
And Councilmember, I, I, I just realized, so I understand where you're going. And and so for that, as far as, as far as the detailed costs, you know, we along the annual maintenance costs are $21,000. What we're proposing with this item is if if council wants to provide direction to staff to spend time to develop this, we would further develop all these costs and a funding mechanism and identify how to move forward with the community facilities district, and we'd come back with, you know, with real firm costs. So.
Right.
This district, my friend, requires a public vote.
Right, the neighborhood would have to vote for it, right?
So who's going to, so somebody's got to pay for a special election, two-thirds vote, Teramina, the whole shebang?
All those costs would be included, you know, we provided enough data here that we can decide if we want to pursue this. We would come back with all of those costs and and all the steps in detail.
And and one option would be to piggyback on the regular election, so it wouldn't be a special election cost.
I believe so, yeah.
Yes, mindful that the next regular election is November 2022.
2022, that's so that's that's an option.
And even if it's on a general election, there's still an additional cost.
There's just not as much.
There's not as much, I agree.
We have 74 houses also.
Randy?
Okay, so I'm just. I, again, I struggle with this, but but I'm willing to listen. So, James, you put some numbers together here for recommended improvements prior to dedication.
Yes.
And it's a half a million dollars.
Yes.
John and Robin, do you guys have a half million dollars in your fund?
As I said, we do not at the moment have that money, but we have about 100, roughly $100,000. And my understanding was that was over 10 years and that that would be, we would get that money through developing this district and essentially taxing the people who live on Teramina.
Right. That's what a Melo Ruth Special Community Service District would do. We put a partial tax on there to fund this.
It would be in the city would be the the lead agency, Bill?
Right.
All right, I found what I was looking for, James. So this is, it's this is what I was looking for. It says viability and risks. That's why I couldn't find it. But it says there'd be a concern that Persimmon Hill Country Club and Quail Oaks might want to do this. Have they requested it before and been denied? Or is that new?
No.
Why would that be concerning if they were paying for everything and doing everything and it didn't cost us any money and we were saving them money? Why would that be a liability or a risk?
Yeah, this is the, you know, the Public Works initial report. We obviously, we didn't state that in our, in the staff report from from me. It's in the report. You know, the the concern was the idea of establishing a precedent and, you know, adding more streets. I didn't necessarily share that concern, so you'll notice the staff report doesn't necessarily repeat that. It just raises the issue that private streets may request, other private streets may request it.
And and also, if it was set up as a special district, the streets wouldn't be dedicated to the city. They'd be dedicated to the special district.
And also, we're the first historic district. Did I say that? In Ojai, so we're not just on the other private road. We're.
Yeah, it's a distinction between some of those.
Yeah.
But you're not really a private road. You're a public road. Anybody can drive through there, right?
Oh, no.
Well, not if we didn't want to.
What?
Not if we didn't. No, we're a private road. We own the road.
Right.
I'm saying, when I go to visit someone, I don't have to go through a booth or anything like that. Anyone can drive through and see the neighborhood or walk through or bicycle through. That's all I'm saying.
Right, we haven't chosen to put any restrictions on people coming through, but we think the standard should meet the city's standards since we are the first historic district. So this is just not that at the moment it doesn't, and the roads aren't that bad. But over time, and we're looking forward in time here.
Yeah, but let me just clarify. When I hear the word private road, I guess it doesn't, it means in my mind that you need permission to enter.
Not necessarily, it's just how it's owned. It's just the ownership structure.
Oh, okay, but, okay, that's what I didn't quite understand. I signed it for a private road. I thought I couldn't just enter it. Okay.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
I just, I'll just go ahead and put something out here for a motion for discussion. I'd like to move that we give direction to staff to develop a formal proposal for a community special district for handling the Termania street infrastructure.
I'll second.
Okay, Gail, can we have a vote?
I have a question. Is there an associated, I mean, if this was an applicant coming in to rezone their property or ask us to do this, we'd have a fee. Are we, is there any fee for the staff time and doing all this?
No, it's not. It's not part of our established fee structure. You know, we don't, we don't have a fee for CFD development.
Well, what do you anticipate the staff cost is going to be to put together the next? Because this is pretty comprehensive. I don't know if the next one's more detailed. You know, what are we talking about as far as staff, James?
That that's the portion of the staff report where it says immediate costs, staff, staff and consultant costs estimated at $3,000 to $5,000 and legal and engineering estimated at $10,000 to $25,000.
Would that be what we would be, would that be the next step is we'd have to come up with that cost outlet? To do the, to do it, what the motion is suggesting?
Yeah, I mean, a big chunk of that is is staff consultant and city attorney time, which would would be used to draft, you know, to draft those documents to move forward.
And we could certainly divide up the process. We don't have to draft everything to the CFD tomorrow.
Right.
Ending further council action. There's a series of steps, but in particular, the city usually would hire a CFD consultant who is an engineer who prepares the necessary engineering and financial reports to create the structure for the ballot measure. That wouldn't, we wouldn't do that until we had further council direction.
We could put it on the agenda just for a preliminary proposal of a CFD.
Securing proposals for those those consultants, et cetera.
Right, so then we would approve hiring the consultant. I, that my, I'll amend, self amend my motion to, that's, that's what I'm suggesting.
I'll second your amendment. Your amendment, motion.
Again, who pays for this assessment of all this, of all this land that we're going to be taking over? The conditions of the road, who is that, another part of our in-house engineering? Or is that an assessment that John or Robin, you guys have already had done?
What I said, what I heard is we're going to have solicit proposals and then that'll come before council to vote on whether we do it by the city or we we ask the Neighborhood Association to pay for it. But that would be based on a specific consultant proposal that would be brought to council.
So we're not deciding to pay for anything at this point?
No, just soliciting proposals is what I heard.
I'm looking at $3,000 to $5,000 in staff time to get to the next step.
Yeah, and $10,000 more.
And then $10,000 to $25,000 to take that next step that I'm still unclear whether we're taking that next step before we get to the next meeting. The reality is, if it's $30,000 total, normally that would not be alarming, but right now that could be the last $30,000 we have in a month from now. So that's a real, I mean, that's a genuine concern for a for for that that initial cost outlet. I just want to make sure we're figuring that out.
Okay, I didn't think that that was the cost included in my motion. I, what I heard was we were going to be soliciting proposals and we'll find out the cost of doing that and then we'll cross that bridge when those proposals come before us.
Well, that's what's confusing. And I apparently this isn't part of the staff report. It's part of the Public Works Report. But it says immediate costs. I mean, immediate to me means whatever we do next. And that's somewhere between 13 and 30,000.
Well, isn't that the immediate cost if it was going to be dedicated to the city and we're really talking about a special district at this point, which is a different thing?
Yeah, so these were the immediate costs if we were going to move forward fully with developing the community facilities district. What I think ended up being proposed right right now by, I think it was Councilmember Wierich, was instead of doing that soliciting proposals, which is not as substantial as is moving fully forward. And it, you know, I would estimate, you know, city attorneys more familiar with it, I would say, estimate what, you know, eight to 15 hours of staff time would be spent on that. So rather than all these.
Sounds reasonable on a quick guess. I mean, I think the distinction is, is it staff time alone? Or is it staff and consultant time? So what I, the key question I don't know the answer to is how much engineering, certainly Greg is the PE. Does Greg have enough on his, on hit, can he do the engineering in-house without talking to outside engineer to be able to bring something back for which sufficiently engineered that we could get proposals for council to review for a CFD to be set up? And what would the price of that be? And yes, typically, when a CFD is formed, it's done by a developer building a subdivision, so they pay all costs. The city pays for it, obviously.
And the CFD, if it passed, would wrap in all the soft cost into the, as part of that district.
Which always raises the question, if it fails, who bears those costs? And that, of course, is a possible for council.
And I know the the agency that brings it bears the cost if it fails. There's nobody else holding the bag open at that point, unless we have some other creative way. But just like if our vote for going, that Casillas was on the hook for the money if we didn't pass.
And the solution to that, that some agencies use is a reimbursement agreement where the applicant, for example, pays for the cost upfront in cash, either whether it fails or passes. If it passes, it can be reimbursed out of the funds of the CFD. If it fails, the city hasn't paid it direct. And that would be a choice perhaps not to be made tonight, but is an option.
Randy, you want to say something?
Yeah, I guess my question here is, is, like you said, I'm, to me, I'm always trying to find that middle ground. I, I'm not, I don't want to say no to anybody, but I've just, I don't know why we're rushing this. I don't know why we need a motion. I don't know why we need to vote on anything tonight. I'd like to see us maybe table this and bring it back sometime in March and give us a little more time to ask the questions that we need to ask and to gather more information, even if it's from Robin and from John, but I just need more. And I think we're rushing into something that we don't need to rush into. And I think Robin and John need to actually spend a little more time with Greg Grant. You need to understand what you're buying or what you're selling because we are horrendous on maintaining our streets in this community. And you guys are at a, at a very high level there. You know, I work in that neighborhood and I know what's there. And I'm going to take you guys over to Drown and I'll show you what's in my neighborhood. And that's what my fear is, is that you're, you might get suckered into something or we might get taken into something where where your group becomes very, very unhappy. And that's the other thing is, I don't know what your assessment fees are now and I don't know what they would need to be. One, to come up with the half a million dollars just to get this package brought, just to get your streets brought up to snuff. And I don't always agree with Mr. Grant's numbers. You've got 60 trees that need to be looked at. You need an arborist report and you need the work to be done in it. And for $15,000, I think you'd be lucky if you got an arborist report for $15,000. So I don't know how accurate the numbers are here. And I just don't want, I don't want to suck you into something that you think is great. And I don't want us to be sucked into something that that we feel is great. I think we need a little more time to study this. And and maybe prior to it being agendized, maybe, maybe it should have been sent around to us council people individually so we had more time to look at it and to, you know, this is kind of like what I talked about earlier. If this had been brought to council and had been prioritized and said, okay, we're going to look at Teramina, then we all would have been reaching out to the Teramina people saying, give us some information. You know, let us do some more research. So that's, that's just my take on it. So I guess there's a motion in a second or what are we going to?
Robin is trying to make a comment.
I don't know if it's appropriate, actually, because you have a motion on the floor being discussed.
Well, and I'll just say with, you know, dovetailing with what Randy said, I'm all for it if we can save Teramina money as long as we're not spending money that we don't understand and we're not going to cost them more at the end of the day. If we can figure out a way to do it, let's do it. But it does mean there's more council time. This is not. But it does mean there's more council time. This is an ongoing requirement. This adds more to our list. I'm not concerned about, you know, costs coming back to the city council having to make the decision. But all this staff work and all that stuff, as long as it's, you know, if it's if it's if we're getting the money we need to and it's not coming out of our pocket and we're saving that money, we can figure out a way to do it, then.
That's a win.
I'm on board with that.
That's the point of my motion. Take the next step looking at that.
Yeah.
All right, ready for a vote, Gail? And just to clarify, this is just to get more information, really, everybody. Yeah, and you know, I think it's probably the challenge is because of the financial situation we're in right now, it's hard to make a commitment like that. So, but once again, this is just for more information, for clarity, so. Ready for a vote?
Um, and and to also clarify, we have no public commenters on this.
Okay, thanks, Gail.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wirek?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
And thank you, Randy, for your comments.
Thank you all. Thanks for staying with it.
Thank you, Rob. Thanks, thank you, John, for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so moving right along. Uh, we are at the council members' reports. Uh, well, I would just like to say Monday is the twenty first Martin Luther King Day and it'll be on Zoom. Uh, eleven AM, it's uh the school district, it'll be on their Facebook page, so. Going live at eleven, so check it out. It's gonna be really good. Anybody else?
I have a quick comment. Uh, Mayor Sticks, I uh, I want to appreciate the answers I've been getting uh from the city manager and and the public works director. I had some concerns about some of the things have been revealed in Stewart Canyon. And uh, you know, I didn't know there was a concrete plug when we're trying to restore the stream flow, you know, an illegal structure, uh, a lot of metal and other things uh that uh weren't necessarily covered by the grant. So I appreciate um looking at those questions and and helping to possibly formulate a request for uh donated funding from uh other sources in including possibly maybe the first kind of support we could get from the uh the Green Cross MOU relationship. But I just want to tell you, I appreciated the response to the asking the questions and I I I hope to share with the rest of council, you know, what's what's down there and what we might need some extra support to help complete the restoration of that uh that string, that string course.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, anybody else? Whoa, okay, all right, city manager report?
Thank you. Uh, two, two quick items. One is um, as the public comment, uh, I think we, one of our two public comment uh speakers mentioned today, they they asked what's going on with water. And I think uh we all are realizing that the Ventura River litigation that was, you know, one of the biggest issues to ever hit the city a year ago has kind of dropped off the radar um because of everything else going on. So just as a uh, just for public information, uh, we will be posting information on that litigation on our webpage and our Facebook pages in the next day or two. So um uh, people that are curious what's going on or uh what the deadlines are can check our webpage and our Facebook page for that. And the short answer is that the next deadline is a deadline for certain people to answer by January twenty ninth. So if people are interested, they should uh check our page and we'll we'll put some information up. And then uh, secondly, along uh similar lines, uh, we have our future. Uh, we have a tentative schedule here for the next city council meeting. Um, with a a couple of discussion items uh that we are planning to bring forward. Uh, one is we we always have the COVID report and the emergency declaration, so that'll be back. Um, we will have an item on that agenda to talk about the the Ventura River litigation and give some information on that as well. Uh, we'll also plan to do a mid-year budget report, which will be a uh big important item during this uh this challenging times. Uh, and then we um have uh the mural ordinance. Uh, we had the request from two council members for the mural ordinance to to return. And then we have a public hearing for RTK tile, which was recently approved at the planning commission. That'll be coming to council as well. So between those items, a pretty full agenda. Um, uh, it's looking like at the next council meeting. So uh, that'll be the plan for January twenty sixth. And then just lastly, um, we're also planning to a uh, we'll be announcing a tentative schedule in mid-February for an ATP discussion. So I know there's, you know, a lot of our public comments have been about that, so we'll be uh making that information available soon too.
One thing I'd love to see on the agenda at some point is speed, speed on our streets. I'm I'm hearing a lot of people in my neighborhood in particular who are really upset about that shady lane, drowned, pleasant. So I don't know the timeframe would be, but I think that's an issue to slow. Oh, I don't know where everybody's rushing to get to. A lot of rushing. Okay, anything, uh, Suzie, did you want to say something?
Uh, what you just mentioned is definitely an ongoing i- issue valley wide. And so I wanted to ask Randy if he could give an update um on what's happening, because I was being copied on those emails and then I don't know what happened. Um, and you're, you know what I'm talking about?
The drown, you mean?
What happened is um, we ran out of money, so we couldn't match the funds. They couldn't, I don't think they generated enough funds, and so we gave them back their money. And we recommended that once the city gets um a little better off financial financially, that uh they come back and we take a look at it again.
Okay, so the the speed problem is still happening.
Pardon me?
Is is, it's still happening, the speed problem. Nothing has been done, in other words.
Nothing has been done and they've been refunded their money.
Uh-huh, okay, all right, I'm gonna follow up with them. I have some ideas. Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I.
Wait, did you, Bessie, did you want to put speed in general on the agenda or or any or just?
Well, I wanted to see what you all thought about that. I know, you know, I mean, I'm sure it's been on the agenda before. It's just I keep hearing it over and over again, and um it'd be great to do, to slow down the town.
Yep.
You know, a public outreach and education, I think, would be nice to just.
Yeah, we we had this debate when we added some stop signs, you know, for some problems.
I wanted, I wanted to do a valley wide twenty five miles, you know, the motto, twenty five saves lives. And then it was explained, I I guess I can't discuss it, but I can tell you.
That would be correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not, and if it with the mayor adding it it per the vote earlier, it can be, the mayor alone can add an item to the agenda, so.
Okay, well, maybe uh, James, you and I can talk about it and and it sounds like it's pretty full for the next one, so we can talk about it. But that's definitely an issue that is comes up.
It is, yes.
It would really dovetail nicely when we bring up the ATP, could be both.
Yeah, that's a good.
The two back to back, maybe.
All right, well, you guys want to hang out some more or are we ready to? I was just getting started, right? Yeah, my birthday, my my DJ's coming at eleven to set up.
No, I've.
All nighter.
Oh, yeah.
I I I heard a good one last, I heard a good one today that uh um some guy at two o'clock in the morning, his neighbors called the police on him. And he was playing um The Rolling Stones too loud. And uh, and he got off getting a ticket or being arrested because he says, you can't listen to The Stones on low.
Well, now.
Get your stones on, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.